Into the mic. Press the button.
Hello, everyone can hear me okay? Just doing a mic check? Alright, thank you. Be just a second, we're getting the livestream ready. I'd like to call to order, please, the regular meeting of the Celine Area Schools Board of Education for September fourteenth, 2021 at six thirty-five PM. If we could please rise for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for being here, maybe particularly to our new staff who you see in our, in our audience today. And welcome to our new school year. This is our first meeting of the new school year, and so it's very nice to see everyone back again and wishing you a wonderful, a wonderful year and, and health for everyone. This is our first opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the board briefly for up to three minutes or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. Please note that students will be given priority to speak on any topic. The first public portion, public participation portion of the meeting will be limited to one half hour, thirty minutes normally, and limited to agenda items only. A second public participation portion will be offered at the end of the agenda to allow for any other comment. Individuals addressing the board should take into the consideration, should take into consideration the rules of common courtesy. The public participation portion of the meeting cannot be used to make personal attacks against board members, district employees, or students. The way that we do this is we go in person first. So if we have any students who submitted a form, they would come up now, but I think we do not. Okay, perfect. And were there any, Betty, there were no students who emailed in either, correct? Okay, perfect. Moving into the, the parents and community members who have requested to speak tonight. I'll go in order. Megan Gunnerson, parent. And Megan, if you can please toggle on the, yep, the green, the green light. Yep, yep, that's no problem. Oh, yeah. And, oh, one thing, sorry. So just to remind everyone, since we have a lot of new staff here, the first public participation portion is agenda items. So for those watching at home tonight, those are going to be our continue to learn plan, our welcome back to school with our new staff, our junior class, our series three bond, our Board of Education Standards of Governance, and our action items on tonight's agenda. Sorry, Megan, thank you. Yep, so you'll have three minutes to speak, and Secretary Eastup will show the yellow card. I think you know this, but I show the, the yellow card at thirty seconds out, and then the red will terminate the three minutes, and we try to provide equity to all with three minutes. Okay, go ahead, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me have an opportunity to speak. I haven't gone off the agenda before, so if I'm doing this incorrectly, please stop and correct me. I had a couple of questions directly related to two items that are on your agenda and didn't know if by asking them here, there might be opportunity to have them answered during their reports because despite multiple emails across more months and more time than I'm willing to recount here, I'm still not finding the answers that I'm searching for. Particularly in item number seven B, the continue to learn plan for the 2021 school year. I was hoping in going to meet the teacher the last two weeks and meeting with more than twelve teachers and an administrator, because I have more than one child, to hear more about how we are going to address the lost learning plan specifically for my family in math and a foreign language, and then additionally for when the kids go into quarantine. I am not so naive as to think that this is not a possibility in this academic year, and I would like to know what the plan is. We've been working on these plans for eighteen months in my career and in my personal life. I always have a Plan A, but I also always have a Plan B, and I'm working on Plan C. And I haven't seen, and in speaking with the teachers specifically, that there is a district-wide plan to make sure that these kids roll out and move forward, and more importantly, that they are not left to languish independently learning all new material over the course of ten days. That is very concerning to me, especially at the upper levels. It seems like a lot of the focus has been in the K through five, which is understandable as emerging readers. However, we have a significant portion of our school that is, their stakes are way higher. And this languishing at home for ten days doing independent instruction is just not acceptable. I appreciate that teachers are going to waive requirements unless it's elective. Maybe, you know, we can let some things slide, but that's very individual teacher-based. There is no benchmark then to hold people accountable to or how you're going to move them forward. I have great concerns, and this is not the first time that I've spoken to this particular topic. I'm hoping for some greater updates. And then my next questions come to the standards of practice that are part of your agenda. Later, it looks like you're adopting the standards of practice, which, you know, I use every day in my career. But I do have concerns about the ten points that are on here. The first one is you make all of your students a priority. K through five was the previous focus. Again, I say six through twelve is equally as important, and they have higher stakes. Our personal family five oh four plans were not met last year, and I want to make sure that our fragile learners are going to be a priority with this board, and I need to see some tangibles. Thank you for your time.
Megan, thank you for your comments. Yeah, if you can in between, that'd be great. Thank you so much. Next, we have Alberta Bornio, former parent and resident. Alberta, did I pronounce your last name correctly? Okay, thank you very much. And just toggle that on and off at the mic when you're, when you're done. Thank you.
As you said correctly, my name is Alberta Bornio, and I just wanted to express the object to the school's actions and the public hearing process, including the lack of transparency, making information hard to get, refusing to do a question-answer session, and ignoring state law with an over-sexualized sex education program. I object to emails and questions going unanswered, board members using their position to further their own political agendas, and parents being forced to FOIA simple information. You have lost the trust and respect of parents and taxpayers that pay for Celine schools. Signing a paper is a token act. We need to know what specific changes will be made to remedy the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Alberta. Just to remind folks, and I didn't want to interrupt you because I don't think you've spoken at the Board of Education before, so I wanted to afford respect. We, we have the first thirty minutes for agenda items, and we'll both speak perhaps to the Sex Ed Advisory Board, but it's not on the agenda for tonight. Thank you, yep. Usually what we do for the first thirty minutes is for agenda items only in the first portion for public, public comment, but thank you, Alberta, for your comments. Next, we have Rayland Davis, parent.
Thank you. Susan, you'll have to let me know when my three minutes are up. Again, I also object to the way that the school has handled this public hearing process recently, and I think it is an exact example of why you guys think you have to sign another standard of governance form here. My questions are, all of these standard of governance you took when you took an oath. And so at this point, signing a piece of paper to say that you are going to be ethically responsible, and you're going to be transparent, and you're going to actually be nonpartisan. At first, I was like, wow, you're listening to us. And then I realized it, again, feels like a slap in the face because these are things that you've already taken an oath to do. And so again, while you're discussing this, I want to hear specifics on how things really were changed. Parents are really upset about how they have been treated with the lack of answers, lack of emails, the no questions and answers for the Sex Ed, trying to find, having to buy the curriculum itself in order to find information about what's in it. Personally, I've sent multiple emails about how this does not meet state law, how the S E A B is breaking state law, and there's been no response. And, and yeah, the parents are upset, and I have, the last three years, since I am JAS, since you lost their trust, I have been at the board trying to be reasonable, trying to have a conservative voice. I disagree with a lot of the things that have been said, but I've always been respectful and, and tried to work together. And I feel like I'm an enemy, trying to find a spy, trying to get information out of you guys. And I'm not a newbie at this. And this is not fair, and at this point, I'm willing to say, I think you guys are wrong. And I want you guys to publicly tell the district not only how you're going to change from the standard of governance, but give us the information, you know, stop the Sex Ed, fix it, and, and be what we voted you guys in to be because this is just going to continue down. And like I said, I'm, I'm willing to fight for this because I believe you guys are wrong, not just a difference of opinion in this point. Thank you very much.
Rayland, thank you for your comments. The next public comment we have is Louis Barnett, parent. Louis, is it Louis or Louis? Louise, thank you.
I object to the school board and their failure to follow the standards they now promised to adhere going forward. I object to the emails and questions going unanswered, board members using positions to further their own political agendas, and parents being forced to FOIA simple information. We have lost trust and respect on, of the parents. Signing, signing a paper act, what, what specific changes will be made? In addition to that, I did look at the agenda, and I'm pleased to see that the board is taking steps to rectify some of my concerns. I've seen that return to learn is going to be focused on students' education, and that is something that my wife and I feel that, that should be a given. In terms of having to do a form to do something very basic that the board should adhere is just, it just blows my mind. And I encourage every parent that's listening to this to take a larger active part in your child's education by coming to these boards so this doesn't get out of control. Thank you.
Louise, thank you for your comments. Betty, did we have a email? So just for our new attendees tonight, we did have a feature, do have a feature on our website that you can email a comment if you're not able to participate in the meeting. We did this when we were in, in other heights of COVID, when we were in a hybrid meeting to afford equity to those who couldn't be with us in person. So Betty, our executive assistant to the superintendent, Dr. Latch, reads those. Go ahead, Betty, thank you. And, and you don't have to read the addresses or anything like that.
Thank you. I'm reading this on behalf of David Jenkins. Thank you for providing the community with updates via the SAS COVID dashboard. In order to provide more helpful and more transparent insights into COVID trends, please consider implementing the following enhancements. For the number of students in quarantine column, please break that into two columns, with one displaying the number of students quarantining outside of school, and the other displaying the number of students that are quarantining inside of school. With this information, parents can make more informed decisions regarding COVID risk. Please make daily updates to the SAS COVID dashboard to provide more timely COVID statistics updates to the public. Dundee Schools Dashboard is available for reference, and they may be able to provide guidance on how to implement an enhancement that provides closer to real-time updates. Thank you for considering these recommendations that will help parents to make more informed and more timely decisions that will help us to keep our children safe.
Thank you, Betty. Were there any other emails on specific agenda items for the first portion? Alright, thank you very much. Moving on, please, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Items may be added or deleted from the meeting agenda, and/or the order of items may be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. Anyone entertain the motion to? Approve the agenda? Yeah, so we weren't in this room last meeting, we were at the high school, so we're getting back into the rhythm of, of using the mic, so.
Yeah, I'll do it.
Toggle it on and off, okay. Brad moves, second, support. Alright, thank you, Susan, for support. Feels good to be back here, though. All in favor, please say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries seven zero. This district is student-led and always appreciates our student voice, and so now that we are back in the school year, we always begin our board meetings with our student showcase. But before we do that, I'd like to pause for just a moment and reintroduce Julian Downey. He is our new student representative to the Board of Education. You might have seen, you might have seen Julian on stage with us at the, at the last board meeting on August tenth, but we'd like to pause and give him the opportunity to introduce himself to you and to say a few words before opening it up to our student showcase for this evening.
Hello, I'm Julian Downey. I'm a senior at the high school. I've lived in Celine pretty much my whole life, so familiar with, you know, most of the schools and all that. And I'm a member of the varsity hockey and golf team, and this is my first year as a student representative, so super excited to work with the board, teachers, staff, and students, most importantly, throughout this school year. So thank you very much for having me here, and I'm looking forward to the year. And then also with the student showcase, we're going to dedicate time at the beginning of each meeting to student-led programs and student-based clubs ranging kindergarten through twelve, representing events and organizations at each and every school. And today, we have Carson Caldwell, the junior class president, here to brief on the junior class.
Hi, everyone, I'm Carson, as Julian said, and I'm the class president. I'm also a part of, oh, the. Is that good? Okay, okay, yeah. I'm the student class president of the junior class, and I'm also part of N H S Student Council and Students Against Racism. And you can go to the next slide. Right now, we are doing several things for Student Council, and the biggest and most important thing at Student Council right now is homecoming. We're so excited to be back and doing social things again, such as homecoming. I know all of my friends are very excited to be with people, even if that means wearing a mask or being outside. It's just, it's just nice to be around people. And also, as the junior class president, we're responsible for, for organizing proms, so we're starting to work on that. And I'm also the chair of the Hospitality Committee. And last year, we did a lot of teacher appreciation. We individually packed like snack bags for each of the teachers, and I think they really appreciated that, and we love seeing the love from them and giving love to them. So we want to do something similar to that again, and I think that even though last year was like really hard, this year, they still deserve some appreciation, as always. And I also am, I am trying to, last year, I talked about doing something like for mental health, so a peer-to-peer program where we'd get students to be trained by our counselors or by outside resources to be able to talk to students because sometimes it's a little intimidating to go to our counselors, or not that they're intimidating, but like just adults in general. So I think it'd be really helpful for students to be there for other students and to open up to other students. And this could be in several different formats, such as via Zoom or like in person, just whatever people are comfortable with. So I'd really like to implement that this year since last year was really hard for everyone's mental health, and I think mental health is just important in general. And yeah, I think also just everyone's excited to be back in the school. I personally learn a lot better when I'm in school, so I'm excited to be there, and I think everyone else is. Okay, you can go to the next one. I'm also a part of the Students Against Racism Club, as I already said. Right now, last year, we did a lot of training for the younger kids, which I think is very important. We went into the classrooms of the elementary schools, and we read books to them. We didn't exactly like introduce the idea of racism, but we more like showed representation to people of color and for, it was there for people, students of color in the elementary schools that didn't, don't get as much representation as they'd like in the classroom. So that was really helpful, and I really liked speaking with all the students, and it was a really nice experience, experience for me and for other students. And we're also working on a book drive right now, so that would look like books from authors that are people of color or just that have people of color in them, just again, more representation, more points of view. And I feel like in our children's book, I, children's books, I grew up reading books about dogs and like white people, so I feel like it's really, as a person of color myself, I would like to see a lot more books with representation in them, in the elementary school. So we're going to do that again this year and also try to do some education towards students in the high school. So that can be like programs and things like that. We're still trying to figure that out. And then, yeah, and then also I have Giselle here, she's one of my good friends. And in light of all of the things that have been happening at the school recently, Giselle has been working really hard to organize things like protests and, and just bring all the women together in our, in our school because it's, it's scary sometimes to be in a place where there are people who have been, who have been accused of sexual assault, and I think it's a really important matter, and it's really important that girls' voices be heard. So I will turn it over to Giselle to talk more about that.
Oh, sorry. Hi, I'm Giselle Garduno. For those of you who do not know me, and I know that sexual assault is a very touchy subject as well as harassment or rape. But I would also like to thank the, some of the administration and some of the teachers who have helped me and have really showed me how to be stronger and show my own true qualities and who I really am. But I would also like to talk about how students who are at Celine represent who we are. The people who commit sexual assault or do harassment towards someone else, it affects the whole entire school, especially when the voices of those people are silenced, and they don't, they can't feel as if. And they don't, they can't feel as if they can go to anyone in the school. They don't feel as if they can trust their counselors, their teachers. Whereas for me, I feel as if I can. I can go and talk to them. But for other people, they can't. They feel the retaliation that they will face. I started this on Friday, and I've already had hundreds of conversations with people attacking me and getting angry with me. But I've also had a lot of support from people. I've got 411 signatures from women and men who agree with me and believe. And I do not want to attack the board whatsoever and say anything that you guys are doing wrong or anything at all. But I do think there are ways that we can change and to help prevent this, because by allowing people, men and women, not just men, to do this, it allows them to keep continuing to do it. Because here at Celine, it is so normalized by men that they can do this, because they never face punishment for it. And if someone, me, who has been sexually assaulted and harassed multiple times and has asked for help and never got that back and have to see him every single day or being classes with him, and I know other students who have to be in the same class as their rapist, it is extremely disgusting to me that this, when we go to the school, they say, "Oh, well, we can't work around it. Our priorities should be your priorities as well." People go to school to go for a safe place, and many of our students do not feel that they have that at Celine. They are scared to go there because of, they don't trust anyone, and they have to see those people every single day. And when we go to the school, nothing is done. But I would also like to thank Mrs. Denine, who is the assistant principal, for helping me. And I really appreciate everything she is doing. As well, I would like to thank Mr. Raft, who has been extremely supportive as well, and I appreciate him as well. But I was saying that organizing a protest, of course, safe, masks be worn. But I know there's a lot of other students, I don't know if you've seen it, the teal shirts and stuff, who are wanting to do it more violently, who are wanting to attack the administration, which is not what I want to do at all, because lots of people have been supportive of it. However, I would like to do that, to give the voices back to the victims who have, who never got their voice. And I do not want to attack any of the students, name anyone, because that is not my right, and that is not the school's either. And that's, and I know the school has to follow by the law. There's not anything they can do to change what happens or if a case is dropped. But I do think there's more ways that we can help this, because it's still going on and still happening. And most of it, I don't know if you've seen on the news or what's going on with the two people I will not name, because it's not my place. However, I do think our school system can do better in this. And I do believe that our students who do represent us should do better as well, and the school should help with this. That is all.
I just want to pause for a minute to recognize the words from Giselle and Carson. Thank you very much for your, your time and for coming here to speak with us today. And again, welcome, Julian. I don't know if the board wants to make any comment, but I do want to pause respectfully in case any of the trustees or Julian would like to say anything. Yeah, Jenny?
I just wanted to say hello to Giselle, and I'm proud of you from your second grade teacher.
Giselle, I missed your last name. Could you?
My last name is Garduno.
Thanks.
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you to both Carson and Giselle for creating safe spaces, for these types of conversations to happen at the high school, as well as for taking the time to go into the younger grades and showcase diverse books. That's really important to me and speaks, speaks to me, so I really appreciate that. Thank you for your courage.
So I want to applaud also just your commitment to your school. Like what a, I heard about a lot of things that impressed me there, and other things. So the peer-to-peer program for mental health. Mental health isn't a really important thing for young people right now, especially as an educator myself. And so I applaud you, and I hope that you do get that up and running and get the assistance you need and all that. I think it's, I think it's a wonderful endeavor. As far as books and representing people of color, and have you thought about funding sources? Have you reached out to our community? I guess I'm giving you a little bit of a pulpit here. Like, have you thought about that, or have you had people reach out to you for that?
I don't think you've thought, but I mean, you know that I am supporting that.
I know you have.
It's like, it's last year, it was kind of a small, it was really not a lot. And I think I remember, we've been raised on, but I'm close to calling it.
And lastly, I just want to...
Hey, Brad, I'm sorry, because Carson, hi. I want to make sure her voice was heard. Do you mind just saying a few words, Brad, and just reiterating what she said? Or Carson, do you want to come up to the mic? I don't want to...
I think what Carson is saying is that they would gladly accept any
I think that's what I would do.
community support as far as funding for books and for supporting that representation, which I think is, and I applaud. So, and then the last thing is, you know, I'll say that, you know, sexual assault certainly is an important matter. And I applaud you for, for having a voice and for bringing that to us tonight. So thank you.
Thank you for sharing about the junior class and all the initiatives that you were working on. Sounds like a lot, but it sounds like it's going to be really fun and rewarding. And also, Giselle, I just want to thank you for sharing your story. I don't know what's going on, social media, I mean, which is, yeah. I'll check it out later, but I just want to let you know that I believe you. I support you. If you need any resources, just being someone who's kind of volunteered and worked in the area of Women's Studies, Women Resources, if you would like some resources, I can email just as far as local and national sexual assault and domestic violence organizations. That's all.
Thank you very much. And then please know that we, you are our why. This board loves kids, and sometimes it's tough to have conversations and heartbreaking to hear things, but we are open and we are safe. And thank you very much for coming. And Julian, welcome to this year. I'd like to move on now to our first scheduled report. Welcome back to school 2021, 2022, new staff introductions. Kind of, going to continue. Julian's our new staff member, so we wanted to do this and then, and then transition to our Continue to Learn. But we're going to, we're going to pause and let Assistant Superintendent Ellis take it over for a few minutes.
Thank you very much for the time this evening. Tonight, you're going to meet just over 50 of the 67 people that we've hired since July 1st. These individuals are jumping into Celine-area schools at a very, very difficult time with the things that we've gone through relative to COVID and some of the other topics that are being discussed. And so it is my sincere hope that we will all welcome them and embrace them in the same way that they have welcomed and embraced us. So we're going to ask them to come up one at a time and introduce themselves. And I know it's going to be a lot. We don't expect you to remember names and faces, but the beauty of us taping this is that they'll have a record of it. So come on up and introduce yourselves.
That's good. And we are live streaming this, so they can go back and watch it. And Kurt, did you tell them that we, they have to say one embarrassing fact? I'm kidding. I'm absolutely kidding, absolutely kidding. Welcome, everyone, and no, we're not going to do it too. But if we can allow them the space to introduce themselves, and then we'll hold applause till the end and give them a really big welcome, that would be fantastic. Go ahead.
My name is Tyler Reed. I am a sixth-grade teacher at Celine Middle School, and I'm math and science there on the summit team and fired up to be at Celine. So thanks for having me.
My name's John Williams. I'm a technology analyst for Pleasant Ridge and Heritage. Oh, Harvest. I always get those mixed up. I have six kids in the, in the district, four with special needs, and the other two, crazy.
Hi, I'm Lyndi Torvonen, and I'm the speech-language pathologist at Heritage. Thank you.
Hey, guys. I'm Taylor Witt. I am at Woodland Meadows. I'm a paraeducator and also a parent of a Celine student.
Hi, I'm Megan Young, and I'm a life skills teacher in the Young Adult Program.
Hi, I'm Samantha Marlat, and I'm a life skills teacher at the middle school.
Hi, I'm Katie McGee, and I am now the full-time district BCBA.
Hi, I'm Juliana Rosetto, and I'm a para at Pleasant Ridge.
Hi, I'm Angie Zabikowski, and I'm an EL tutor at Woodland Meadows. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Karina Rotondo, and I am the new high school counselor at Celine High School.
Hello, I'm Sean Newlove. I'm on the grounds crew for Celine Schools.
Hi, I'm Cara Burgess. I am the secretary at Woodland Meadows.
Hi, I'm Kelly Banky. I'm the music teacher at Woodland Meadows.
Hi, I'm Amanda Pastalou. I'm a paraeducator at the middle school.
Hi, I'm Foster Wasusik, and I'm the new math and physics teacher at the high school.
Hi, I'm Stacy Garren, and I am the third-grade teacher at Pleasant Ridge Elementary.
Hi, I'm Heather Schwartz, and I'm a first-grade teacher at Harvest.
Hi, my name is Madeline Treber. I'm teaching first grade at Harvest.
Good evening. My name is Brittany Benedetto, and I'm teaching second grade at Pleasant Ridge.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Lauren, and I teach fourth grade at Heritage.
Good evening. My name is Allison Merlos, and I teach life skills over at Heritage.
My name is Sophia O'Connor, and I teach special ed at the high school.
Hi, my name is Marissa Wilworth, and I also teach special ed at the high school.
Oh, and Sophia right before her. Proud teacher. Yes. And I won't say, I guess I should say that I had them in kindergarten and first grade, so that makes me really old.
Hi, I'm Cameron Cochran, and I am the assistant principal over at Heritage.
Hello, my name is Linda Malacca, and I'm a special education teacher at the high school.
Hi, my name's Ashlyn Sumien, and I'm a young fives teacher at Pleasant Ridge.
Hello, I'm Cara Wetzel, and I'm a fifth-grade teacher at Heritage.
Hi, my name's Kaylee Harmon. I'm also teaching fifth grade at Heritage.
Hello, my name's Nicholas Sells, and I'm working at the Young Adult Program at Liberty School as a para.
Hi, I'm Grace Muir, and I'm teaching fourth grade at Heritage.
I'm Kathleen Foley Edmonds. I teach art at the high school and the middle school.
Hello, my name's Danielle Harrison, and I'm a paraeducator at Pleasant Ridge.
Hello, my name is Hallie Warner. I'm a paraeducator at Pleasant Ridge.
Hello, I'm Darren Van Wuskirk. I'm a culinary technician at the high school.
Hi, I'm Katie Hughes, and I'm a second-grade teacher at Harvest.
Hello, I'm Lori Cutler, and I am one of the literacy tutors at Heritage.
Hi, I'm Daniella Fay. I'm also a literacy tutor at Heritage.
Good evening. I am Sarah Mahler, and I am also a literacy tutor at Heritage.
Hi, I'm Amanda Leedy. I'm also a literacy tutor at Woodland Meadows and Heritage.
Hi, I'm Jacob Riggle, and I'm on grounds for Celine Schools.
Hi, I'm Charlie Jones, and I'm a technician at the SWWC.
Hi, I'm Emily Cook, and I am an administrative assistant at the SWWC.
Let's give them a round of applause. And I think Kurt said 67 in total, 50 tonight. So we'd like to extend a warm welcome to the others that aren't, aren't here with us this evening. We wish all of you the very, very best. We hope to see you back in the boardroom whenever you would like, either presenting or participating in the audience. You're always welcome. I think Kurt probably wants to get a picture. Do you want to say anything? It's a big picture. No, let's start. Do you want to say anything about...
I would just like to welcome our new staff. As you can see, we had a lot of turnover throughout the summer. It's largely based on some of the pandemic situations and trying to bring on new staff to support the district and the direction. And it's just great to see so many new faces. But as you can see, Assistant Superintendent Ellis has been very busy in organizing the hiring process. But we're feeling really lucky with this group and the significant work that's been put in by our HR team and our administrators in bringing on a quality group. So looking forward to working with all of you and getting to know many of you as well.
All right. Wonderful. Moving on, we promised to keep Continue to Learn Plan up at the front of our agendas moving forward, of course, throughout the school year. And tonight, we're going to dig into literacy. As you heard, a lot of literacy tutors have been, have been hired, and we're excited to see the presentation from Dr. Latch and crew. We'll let him introduce his, his team.
Okay, thank you very much. Excited to be able to have this opportunity tonight to go over our latest Continue to Learn update. With me is going to be a team of Cara Davis, Shannon Washington. Where's my other group here? Yeah. Yeah, they're going to be coming on up to join. Oh, and Caroline Stout, who's going to be joining us soon. However, we may end up doing her part as she said she was going to be a little bit late. So we're going to go ahead and get started. And it's set up in a series of discussions about where we are with COVID and procedures. I know that some people have been asking about that as it relates to quarantine and things like that. And then we were going to get into literacy, our teaching and learning team, and then also our culturally responsive instructional plan. So we'll go ahead and get started here. If we look up at the screens, we've been talking about the importance of five days a week of in-person instruction. And we've been basing our entire start of the school year around that. What we're seeing at the buildings, as I'm walking halls over these last couple weeks, is that we are starting to return to a sense of normalcy where students are getting into routines and rhythms, and same with our teaching staff and support staff, which has been great. Our primary goals are that we are going to support our outstanding instructional program. And then we're going to work with our co-curricular classes, extracurricular activities, and our first-rate athletic programs, again, in keeping that focus on what's our best opportunity to keep students in school five days a week. From what I've observed thus far, students are really happy to be back in school. We heard that from some of our student representatives tonight. And in every building I've been in throughout the district, we're seeing that across the board. So that's very exciting. In terms of current guidance, just going to give you an update where we are. We've talked about the Delta variant being more contagious. We certainly have, at the beginning of the school year, outlined a plan as it relates to masking, primarily in the substantial and high transmission phases. And then most recently, the Washtenaw County Health Department has come in and issued a mask mandate in schools. And that we are going to be looking at changes related to that mask mandate from Washtenaw County simply by our indoor sports. In other words, the changes that are going to impact this latest mask mandate are that masking being required for indoor sports and spectators. All the other procedures and processes were already in place, surrounded by our Continue to Learn Plan. One question that people have asked is, when would the Washtenaw County Health Department potentially rescind the order? And that would be if we were to have 14 straight days of dropping back into the moderate transmission phase. And then we would be able to enact our Continue to Learn Plan at that point. In terms of where we're at right now, this is updated as of September 11th, but in the high transmission phase, we do like to see, you know, show a graph so that people can see the trend patterns that we are experiencing as we go through, continue to go through this COVID pandemic. We get this from across the county using this COVID tracker and we consistently use it so that we're looking at the same data. In terms of the vaccination process, it is actually, through the Michigan Health and Human Services, it is district's responsibility to promote and support the vaccination process. However, I want to be real clear about what that means from our lens. That means that we will be supporting the vaccination process. If we have vaccination clinics or opportunities that kids can participate in or community members, we would advertise, just like we did towards the end of last year when we had some of those opportunities. But we are certainly not asking or wanting our teaching staff or support staff to be asking students in the classroom, are you vaccinated or promoting the vaccinated vaccination process? That's certainly not their role. Here's where we're at in terms of the vaccination processes, data. I got COVID Act Now is the site I use to look at those latest numbers. What it does show is that Washtenaw County is quite a bit ahead of the state average. That speaks well to our opportunity to keep students in school five days a week. And we are seeing some of the trend patterns with our data over these first two weeks that does support a smaller number of COVID cases in close contacts happening in our grades that are at the upper levels. In terms of our prevention strategies, these have not changed in that, at the beginning of the school year, we did talk about those in green promoting vaccination, mask usage. Our ventilation systems have been checked over and over by Rex Cleary and the buildings and ground staff. Hand washing, general cleaning. Parents have been excellent about keeping students home when they're sick and getting tested. And then also the contact tracing in combination with quarantine that District Nurse Hervey and the nursing team have been doing such a great job with, not only last year, but into this year already. The area that we struggle with is the physical distancing. And we've always said that that was going to be an area that we are going to need to work on in that we have a lot more students in the building and the ability to keep students three to six feet apart is not realistic in this environment. So, the actual updated dashboard. When you look at this, and this is on our website, if you go to our main website, there's a box that pops up that Anna Britnell organizes each week that says COVID-19. You click on it and it moves into the dashboard. What you're seeing is, if you go right to the bottom, you're going to see that the vast majority of our cases in terms of close contacts and students in quarantine are happening at our lower elementary schools. And I'm going to talk a little bit about why that is the case. So you look at the Pleasant Ridge Elementary with forty-five students in quarantine and twenty-seven students at Woodland Meadows in quarantine. Exactly what does that mean? Because students in quarantine this year often means that they are coming to school, masking, but also doing COVID testing, which is different than we had happening last year. So, here's an update on that. As it relates to those cases at Woodland Meadows and Pleasant Ridge, the vast majority are happening, for whatever reason, in the young fives and kindergarten classrooms, which requires a whole classroom quarantining approach per the Washtenaw County Health Department guidance. That's based on the notion that students at that level have a very difficult time of potentially staying apart from each other. Kids, young kids, want to be close and therefore the whole classroom gets quarantined when a student does test positive. But what that does mean is that the vast majority of those close contacts are able to remain in school as long as they don't have symptoms. And then our nursing staff is helping to test them in a non-invasive way several, you know, multiple times per week to verify that they aren't testing positive. And therefore, most of those students on that quarantining list are able to stay in school, which is part of our objectives and our goals. Now, some of the students are needing to do the traditional ten-day quarantine. That happens if families do not want the students tested, and that's perfectly fine. It also happens when there are close contacts in the lunchroom. Because in the lunchroom, that is considered a more risky activity, obviously masks are off. And therefore, some of those students are needing to do the traditional ten-day quarantine. But again, if our goal is to keep students in person as much as possible, we are succeeding with that already, even though we have a number of COVID cases, which is reflective of the community transmission. So we should expect as a district that as community transmission is in these substantial and high transmission zones, we are going to continue to have COVID cases. It will be reflective of the community and we will work to manage those so it minimizes the disruption of students being out of school. I'm now going to call up Cara Davis, who's our teaching and learning team lead. And she's going to talk to us about our direction this year as it relates to the academic program.
Thank you, Steve. So, last year, we pushed pause on many of our initiatives in order to focus on tackling the many challenges of the pandemic, creating space for our teachers to meet the demands of the virtual and hybrid educational environment of the time. This year, with our students and staff back in the buildings fully, we're returning our attention to moving forward with our building goals. The building goals are outlined on the left and those are specific to the needs of individual buildings. And they also share key components of rigor, relevancy, and responsiveness. So outlined on the right, some of the pieces that we are thinking about, reinvigorating our focus on our SAS compass, our graduate profile and the student attributes included in that. Personalizing our educational experiences, focusing on our students as individuals in a culturally responsive manner. Centering components critical to social, emotional support and wellness and amplify, amplifying authenticity and connection to real-world experiences. All of these are critical in creating the environment in which our students can best flourish. When we think about personalizing educational experiences and centering components of social, emotional learning, we are intentionally maximizing existing program and making deliberate shifts to attend to the transitional needs that students may have returning to full in-person schooling. Some examples include, but are not limited to, our emphasizing of celebrating accomplishments and gains. So thinking about students where they are at and focusing on what they have gained versus focusing on deficit language or mindsets that might create shame or increase anxiety in our students. In addition, continuing our excellent student-based programs such as web, link crew, and elementary community meetings. Adjusting assessment approaches in order to be responsive to the needs of our students. We eliminated the NWA at the K-three level, focusing on FNP benchmarking. And Caroline Stout will go further into our literacy work in the next group of slides. Focusing on balanced assessments for our students and at the high school, middle school, standards-based learning. Thinking about as grade levels and departments, reflecting on the previous year's accomplishments. Looking at curriculum maps in order to better set up our students for success. So recognizing that more bridges may be needed to be made this year as we transition students from what they learned last year to the courses or grade levels during this year. And then creating spaces that are both at the classroom level and building-wide, flexible, responsive, and inclusive. So thinking about how our classrooms are set up to be representative of the identities inside the classrooms, creating spaces like quiet rooms, safe spaces for our students to feel a part of the broader community. In addition, when we're thinking about supporting our students this year, some of the considerations that we made prior to the school year starting, we partnered with Thriving Minds Behavioral Health. And as a part of that, we collectively learned about what trauma disorders look like and how that impacts our students and their brains. We learned strategies to be proactive as teachers and as support staff, as well as key tips for intervention. In our buildings, our counselors and social workers are working diligently to address the many social, emotional needs amplified during this pandemic. Some examples are included in the next couple of sections. I'll highlight a few for you. At the elementary level, crisis intervention, so supporting students and staff in distress as needed. Monitoring drop-off and transitions for signs of that distress. Parent contact, meeting taking and talking with parents with current concerns and following up with those who shared concerns last year. Collecting and reviewing behavior data of Swiss behaviors communication and often indicates that a child is struggling. At the middle school level, hosting trails, anxiety groups for our seventh and eighth graders and lunch bunches for those in need and individual and group meetings per our students' request. As well as centering SEL lessons, so social, emotional learning lessons, in sixth grade classrooms to create that soft start for this year. And then there's of course Sid the Wellness Cat at the middle school. At the high school level, connecting with our ninth graders who struggle in a traditional year, entering and making sense of high school, being extra visible in the hallways before school and talking to students at lunch, particularly those sitting alone in the classroom. Providing increased supports to students identified with anxiety or who are more introverted. These are all strategies that our counseling and social workers shared, staff and social workers shared with us as some of the strategies that they are implementing at the various levels. And again, I just shared a few of the many that they are putting into practice in their school spaces. We are also really attending to our teaching staff and our staff in terms of their own social, emotional needs. With Thriving Minds, so referring back to our partnership with them, we did identify some moves that can be made for self-care. And as an organization, we're working to be really intentional about creating a culture of care and support. Some things that we've done deliberately to support our staff, to be responsive to their needs, are paying attention to the items that they highlighted in their exit survey from 2021, including reducing meetings, moving some meetings to Zoom, providing PD around topics that they indicated as priorities for this year based on their observations of students in their classrooms. Increasing check-ins and team and culture building amongst the staff, adding in some fun factors, themed welcome back gifts, shared swag and sweet treats, and of course, an abundance of gratitude. We also have a small but very valued cohort of young fives through sixth grade virtual students this year. In order to be responsive to families who preferred an entirely virtual experience, we contracted with Lincoln Learning, a group out of Pennsylvania, to provide students with the content curriculum experiences. And there's some highlights of the components of Lincoln Learning on the slide there. I've been working really closely with these families throughout the transition. Like any transition, there have been some bumps in the road. However, we have definitely continued to get better and evolve and make this experience the best it can be for our students. So they are all paired with a Celine mentor inside of the district. The teachers at Lincoln Learning are Michigan teachers. They have live office hours with which they can support their students. And the courses that they elected are math, science, social studies, and English Language Arts, as well as one elective that was the students' choice. And we actually just had a great meeting last night with the Lincoln Learning group themselves to get some extra support. And I've seen many of these families either via Zoom or had had conversations on the phone or saw them on the meetings last night. So, it's been a growing option. All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to Caroline.
Thank you for having us. I am going to present a little kind of snapshot of our end-of-year reading data, K-three. We are in the process of collecting this assessment data right now. We don't expect that some of the target areas that we identified last year that have helped us plan for this year are going to change drastically, but we'll certainly update you as those come out as well. So, real quick, I know you've seen a lot of colorful graphs from me before, but the way to interpret it is, I'm going to show you some bar graphs where basically it represents the percent of students who scored at or above benchmark on Acadian's reading, specifically K-three. And benchmark just means that it's the minimum level of performance that indicates a strong likelihood that the students will meet end-of-year grade-level expectations in reading. And there'll be some that have represented composite score, which is a measure of overall risk. And there are some that represent kind of some of the sub-indicators in terms of literacy. So, just a quick review. When we're talking K-three literacy, not all students develop on a continuum that's, you know, perfectly linear. However, there is a progression of skills. The pandemic has really impacted some of those younger students in a way that we are doing a lot of planning to address because they have some gaps in their foundational skills. So, when we think of the progression, we start with a lot of sound work, a lot of things that are oral. Phonemic awareness is just a fancy word to say, the ability to manipulate sounds and words, to hear and manipulate sounds. Phonics is when you start mapping that onto letters, so letter-sound association, being able to blend those into words to decode. When students are able to use that to read text, they focus then on accuracy and making sure that they're making real words and reading the words as they are. Then we focus on building their automaticity so they can do it faster, more fluently, without too much cognitive effort put forth to just read what's on the page so that they can focus on reading with expression and the ultimate goal, which is reading with comprehension. So, we also posted this report, actually a more extensive report to our website in June that included some NWA data and everything disaggregated by reporting category. But assuming you had better things to do with your evenings, here are some of the highlights. So, I'll go through kindergarten through third grade. In kindergarten, again, this is that composite. So when we look, as I've said before, we're very fortunate in this district. We tend to have students who come with amazing skills already, amazing pre-literacy concepts. So, if you recall, like the MTSS triangle representation, we want to make sure that at any point in time, at least eighty percent of our students don't need any additional support to be successful, right? So, basically, we have the gift of kindergartners coming to us almost already there. You see those graphs are in the high seventies. And by the end of the year, typically, we're able to get them really high. What's interesting about kindergarten, first grade, is we've noticed in the past several years that we do tend to see a little slide between the end-of-year kindergarten and first grade fall. We have a lot of theories on why that is, but we like that our numbers are usually really high, except for last year. And I've spent a lot of time pondering what it would have meant had the scores stayed the same and we not actually had that much instructional time with them. So, it's bittersweet to see this, but we certainly are serious about addressing it and making sure that it does not have a long-term negative impact on our students. So when we look specifically at some of the skills that we want to address in our incoming first graders, we want to make sure that they continue to have that phonemic awareness as part of their tier-one instruction and tier-two and tier-three intervention for those who need a little extra boost. Because, again, they ended the year decently, but we do expect a summer slide. And the main focus is going to be really fluency with those early phonics skills. So, basic consonants, short vowels, being able to quickly associate the sounds with those letters, which is going to help them then be fluent readers. So our first grade composite last year, we can see already in the fall. So, and in case... So the last graph, you could see, or sorry, the beginning of year, last kind of reddish color, you can see already that the pandemic had impacted these students last fall, right? We know that they missed some of that really key kindergarten instruction and ended the year still needing some extra support. So the areas here to focus on in entering second graders are going to be specifically those letter-sound correspondences, moving into more complex phonics patterns, and the ability to very automatically blend those into words when they're reading unknown words. In second grade last year, again, so you can see already, if you recall from the kindergarten and first grade graph, by the end of the year, we had sixty-some percent of students at benchmark. We hope to have eighty, right? Here already, it's a little higher, seventy. And you'll see in third grade, it's a little higher as well, which really kind of shows the disproportionate impact the pandemic has had on our early readers. So here, the focus is going to be more on accuracy and then reading fluently. Not speed reading, like I'm speed-talking right now, but rather just reading automatically enough that they can focus on expression and comprehension and can be motivated to keep reading. We don't like to do things that take us too long. In third grade, kind of similar picture. We also know that those third graders, just much like the second graders, they were readers already when the pandemic hit, but they just had fewer opportunities to really practice it unless they happened to love reading because there was less time in school. And we really, homework was, if anyone else, you know, had this experience, in my household, homework was just, you know, let's be together as a family. We didn't do a whole lot of extra at home. So, the focus here is going to be still on maintaining that accuracy, while building fluency and just that reading stamina and making sure that as these incoming fourth graders are now reading to learn, they are able to do so. they are able to do so effectively and efficiently and be motivated to continue. So here are some of the things that we have done to address this COVID impact. We have hired additional literacy interventionists, which we are very excited about. We have nine new interventionists this fall, which has been, it's been great to train them and get to know them, including three that are dedicated to Heritage alone, and that's new this year. We're very excited that the district has allowed us to make that happen. Math intervention is returning Pleasant Ridge. I realize we're talking literacy, but that's still something exciting. This teaching and learning team that we are going to describe in more detail in a minute has members specifically focused on literacy coaching and intensifying instruction. And we also have a new process that we've been working on for the last year for intensifying instruction. What I mean there is really just making sure that when we are making decisions about students who need the next level of support, regardless of what the area, that we are using an evidence-based process that is cyclical, that's using data to learn from what has worked and not worked, and continue to build over the years and communicate between grades so that we can be as effective as possible and as supportive as possible with our students. And then the last thing I wanted to highlight is we did expand our summer school offering at Pleasant Ridge. We about doubled the program and coined it the Super Summer Scholars Program. So we had sixty, sixty-seven students in that one this year, offered meals and transportation, and really tried to get as many students there as possible. And that was really a nice opportunity as well. So, now Shannon Washington, our consultant for culturally responsive instruction, is going to tell us about the great plan she has and some of the goals for this year.
Good evening, and I probably should have introduced myself with the new people, although I'm not new to any of you. But I am going to be our consultant for culturally responsive instruction this year. And I'm going to share with you kind of a summary of the one-year plan that I've created. So first, this plan has three objectives. It is designed for one school year. And those objectives are to collaboratively define culturally responsive instruction for Celine area schools. I'll talk a little bit more about that process later. The plan establishes a timeline for continued transition toward culturally responsive instruction for all teachers. And it also serves as a transitional plan toward a long-term instructional position, which would specialize in culturally responsive instruction implementation in the classroom. And the quote on the side of the screen is one that I'm kind of using as inspiration for this process. It's that cultural responsiveness is such an essential aspect of the learning process. It is absolutely unavoidable and indispensable. Because at the end of the day, the children... Are you okay? At the end of the day, the children have to be able to see themselves in the lessons they are learning and see the relevance of what they've learned after the dismissal bell rings at three o'clock or two fifty-five or whenever that is. So this plan has three phases. Phase one, I'm calling unearthing and affirming. And the first part of that is to define culturally responsive instruction. I'm providing a framework from the literature, from research, and from practice experience that offers these terms, which I define here a little clearer on this slide. And these terms are ideas around what culturally responsive instruction is. The idea that it is validating, it's normative, ethical, empowering, humanistic, inclusive, transformative, and emancipatory. However, phase two is to look into Celine schools' visioning documents and find out where culturally responsive instruction already either is encouraged, mandated, or modeled. And I've already started this phase, and I've gone through the strategic plan, the school improvement plans I'm still working on, the compass and school board policies. And with my, you know, highlighter or red pen or whatever, I have been able to identify places in all of those visioning documents where Celine absolutely supports culturally responsive instruction, even if it was by another name or no name at all. And so I can fully connect school board policy, the compass, and the strategic plan to culturally responsive instruction. Phase two, I'm calling discovery and collaboration. And the idea here is twofold. I want to both work with parents and teachers along the path of both educating and understanding what culturally responsive instruction is. And the idea is, the goal here is to meet the needs of all students. So, part one of phase two is a professional development series toward culturally responsive instruction for all students. And there are three parts, fall, winter, spring. The goal here is to support teachers in operationalizing culturally responsive instruction. And it begins with Celine creating a definition of what culturally responsive instruction is for Celine. It needs to be unique to Celine's students and teachers and not necessarily just a copy paste from the literature. Congruent to that, or concurrent to that, I want to also provide a place for parents and the community to come and learn about what culturally responsive instruction is. And so I'll be also hosting and facilitating a three-part series for parents to attend. The first part is what is it and what it isn't. It really is informational. The second part is to address needs and fears. And the third part will be how to connect culturally responsive instruction in the community. And I have like grand visions of like librarians and police officers and all that kind of thing, but that's just all in my head right now. And so the final phase is to look at the systemic and structural growth investment when it comes to culturally responsive instruction. And again, like I said, this is already baked in to school board policy, the compass, the strategic plan. And so really using those things to push for hiring and retention of teachers who are versed and experienced or interested in culturally responsive instruction, hearing from teachers about their instructional material needs, and also looking at future professional development. The goal here is to create a situation where Celine teachers can develop each other, where there's not a need for always bringing in an outsider, but really looking at how Celine has developed culturally responsive instruction. So I can say from my experience and from my studies that Celine is leading in this area and being a predominantly white educational organization or institution, and leading in building in culturally responsive instruction into its instructional plan. So I'm excited to be a part of that collaboration. And now I want to bring Cara to talk more about the overall teaching and learning team.
So Shannon and Caroline are two members of our overall teaching and learning team. And in addition, our teaching and learning team, as seen here on this slide, includes a wide range of practitioners who support our staff, our students and families across many different areas. So in previous years, the roles that you see here, many of them existed prior to our team coming together in a cohesive group. However, we worked more independently, in a more siloed way, having to pull the pieces of the puzzle together oftentimes across different meetings or different buildings without a shared sense of mission for the work that we were doing. So by coming together as a cohesive team, our hope is to build our respective systems of support into a unified approach and to best serve the needs of our Celine teachers, students, and families. So, some of the roles represented here, there's instructional design, myself, Jennifer Nelson, Kelly Woodman; student services, Molly Garcia, Monica Ellis; Caroline and Shannon, you met today, Katie O'Keefe, is our district English learner coordinator; Sherry Soonan, who's been an MTSS coordinator and still is an MTS coordinator at Pleasant Ridge, is one of the district liaisons for Intensify Instruction; Meg Phillips works with our science programming as our PLTW program coordinator and our science support; Robin Schmidt is our instructional and technology lead; and then we also have Steve and Teresa Steger as our secondary admin representative, and Michelle Checkowitz as our elementary building admin representative to help guide our work, provide us feedback, and be thought partners in the work that we're doing district-wide. We recently drafted a mission. I'll read aloud for the sake of the whole group. Empathy, respect, equity, and joy will drive the teaching and learning team as we work together to support SAS students, staff, and families in fulfilling the SAS mission. The goal of our work is to promote culturally responsive instruction, curricular alignment, and fidelity, the responsible and effective use of resources, and positive engaging student experiences for all. We'll offer a continuum of support for students and staff, engage in collaborative problem solving, and create proactive systems of cycles and cycles for sustained improvement. And because I know that sometimes missions can feel a little bit wordy, what that really boils down to, I wanted to share some of the key things that we do. So popping these out from the descriptions that we'll post online for our team members, some of the roles that our team provides includes designing professional development cycles for our staff, supporting our new teachers specifically through training days and coaching cycles, providing literacy support directly for our K eight teachers, gathering, I'm just going to skip through a little bit, gathering EL resources, supporting EL tutors throughout the district, coaching staff through online platform integrations, and allocating resources for programs, and also developing family and community partnerships. So those are just some examples of the roles that we have. There are many, many more with the group that we have on the team. But I wanted to give you a taste of what you might see if you talked to one of the members of the team, the kind of work that they're doing behind the scenes.
And so to finalize our presentation, we've been talking about this slide in that all our plans are subject to change as we've been needing to change based on different guidance throughout the pandemic. And that's why I've really been proud of the students, our staff, the community, because they are able to adjust to the changing circumstances and for the most part, gathering together to work on this in that we know that we're having to change as we learn new things about the pandemic and future developments. One thing I would like to say about this teaching and learning team, as you can see, this is a very, very strong group. They truly know what they're doing. We are trying to move forward in a way that is culturally responsive, but maintain the importance of academic rigor and the success that our Celine area school students have and will continue to find. And that's why talking about what Caroline was bringing up earlier about, you know, we have a plan to address some of the learning that has lagged, especially at our early grade levels, because we talk all the time about the importance of literacy. I'll say it again, I say it at just about every meeting where I have an opportunity to. That when there's a ninety percent correlation, that where a student winds up at the end of their third grade experience is where their reading level will be when they graduate from high school, we need to pay a lot of attention to that. And that's why that intensified instruction this year, especially as Caroline pointed out, that movement to bringing in more literacy tutor support at Heritage to really intensify the fourth grade experience is really important. And so we look forward to that opportunity and we're very confident in the approach. With that said, does the board have any questions they'd like to address to myself or any of our teaching and learning team members?
So I just want to clarify, can we split some of it? So like the first presentation related to... Okay, and then talk about the team.
Sure, that's a good idea. So more or less the pandemic concerns first as it relates to operationalizing quarantine. Right, so does anybody have any questions about that related to me?
Susan, did you want to go first?
Sure. So, question about the physical distance piece. I know since last year, I've been talking about that. So with the lunchrooms, because that was a concern about students having to quarantine, being in that situation with the mask off and very close to other students. Are there any... Sorry. Are there any mitigation things that we can look into or are trying to do? I know that Heritage is opening up, I believe, the outdoor piece again, but I'm just curious about that.
Right, some of our issues relate to staffing as well, which, you know, we're going to talk a little bit more about as we, in some of my admin comments later. We struggle with some of our important positions on being able to staff, and therefore, our cafeterias, in terms of food service staff, being able to make sure they're in different areas, different, whether it's outside, inside, different spaces. We are working on that. We've had success in spreading out the high school space, middle school in a couple of different spaces, working on potentially bringing back some outdoor seating at Heritage, assuming we can get the staffing and parent support. We've had a lot of parents say that they are willing to help us in the pandemic and that we really do want to look for that support at Heritage to help monitor and supervise if we are able to bring back some outdoor seating as Heritage is one of the more crowded cafeterias. As it relates to the lower elementary levels, we are moving to a more signed table area so that we can consistently understand who the close contacts are, which in and of itself is a mitigation strategy. If students are sitting in the same spot, you are potentially, your close contacts will be reduced. And so we will continue to work on that as we move forward.
Thank you.
So, have we started to think about a plan though, as weather changes, right? And things get colder and we can't go outside anymore. We still want to try to maintain as much distance as we can.
Right, and then we continue, again, we will do the best we can. We're going to be limited on the outside seating and that we are going to be closer together. And so some of that is routines and procedures as how students are lining up in the lunch line, spacing to the best of our ability. But there's no question about it that we are going to experience some close contacts in the cafeteria spaces. It's just a reality of doing school in the pandemic when you can't ultimately put your students in four or five spaces at a time. And I think that all of the superintendents that I talk to are facing similar situations in their cafeterias and spacing, and that we'll continue to do the best we can to space students, keep organized as to where they're sitting, and try to minimize quarantining to the best of our ability moving forward.
I'm just wondering if there's been any consideration to expanding the number of lunchtimes that maybe would, like, reduce the number of students that are in the cafeteria? At the same time, I know that that's also logistical and staffing nightmare, I'm sure. But I wonder, is, as we look for volunteers and as we look for more support, if that would be a consideration? So maybe instead of four kids at a table or on a bench, there would be two or something like that?
Yeah, I mean, we continue to try to look at creative ways to do that. I think we get into some staffing situations here, definitely logistical issues with the schedule. And so we have talked about that, we'll continue to talk about it. Largely, this is based on putting together all our plans, working with our building administrators to put in place the best possible plan we can based on our staffing model and keeping students organized as to where they are, spacing them out as they are moving about the cafeteria, and potentially having them exit the cafeteria as soon as they're done eating. And whether that means heading out to recess even when it's cold or, you know, back to an indoor recess situation. We do know that that's a mitigation strategy in and of itself, being in the cafeteria less time. So, yeah, we'll continue to work on that.
Yeah, I don't want anyone for a minute to think that I was criticizing. Just, I know that you're being very innovative and the administrators and the lunch teams are also. Just wondering, just wondering.
Right, okay, thanks. Any other questions from me? Okay, yes.
There we go. I just had a question about the quarantining. So you mentioned quarantining in school. And I just, could you describe what that looks like? Is it, you know, in the classroom or are they in a separate room? And then how they're getting their lessons if they are in a separate space, that kind of thing?
Yep, that's a good question, Candace. I should define that further. They're in their same classroom. It's simply that the requirements are that students that are not showing symptoms that were close contacts would mask and that they would be tested, antigen testing on a regular basis with our nursing staff. And we have a plan of how we are going to do that. We've brought in some additional nursing staff. And I think one of the things that I didn't point out in the slideshow, we did mention at points on how we're starting to spend some of the ESR funding that we're receiving, which is some of those COVID relief funds, additional literacy staff, additional staff and supports for antigen testing and so forth. And so we are coordinating to be able to keep up with any of that testing that's required in order to keep the kids in school and in the same classroom. So that was a good question.
I just had a follow-up to that one, if it's okay, just to build off of Candace's question because I had the same question. And I just want to be clear. So in school quarantining, the children are in the same classroom, they're not separated? They're in the same classroom, correct? I mean, they're not segregated?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Brad, did I interrupt you?
Considered... Considered quarantined by definition. So we have a, what number, like out of that number you had there, I think it was 45? How many of those are considered like at home and how many of them are considered like in the classroom?
I would, I would have to look up that information. I don't have that breakdown, but that was-
Is it a significant amount? I guess that's what I just-
There's a lot more that are in school than out, but I don't have the exact breakdown. Because you are right, some of those students are in the 10-day quarantine at home because if deemed as close contacts in, in the lunchroom, that those students would be out of school for those 10 days. So that's true. I just don't have the exact breakdown of that.
I also wanted to ask a question about quarantining. It was my understanding from the last report and from subsequent reports since then, the weekly reports that you send to the community, that the quarantining guidelines and rules were not created by you, but were created by the Wasna County Health Department. Is that the case? And would that change at all? Like the mask mandate, you said with 14 days in the moderate, that would change the mask, the way we operationalize masks. So is that the same for quarantining? Does that ever change or is that consistent?
No, that changes. In fact, we started the year with testing students one time a week if they were in quarantining. Then it moved to three times a week and now it's moving to seven days straight. So it is changing, that's why we talk about the guidance. And that was coming down for the Michigan Health and Human Services to the Health Department. So then we're trying to respond to that information. So it is another good example of how we're trying to adjust as a school district with, with changing guidance.
But that guidance is from other sources, it's not something that the district created?
Oh, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
I have a very quick question regarding Heritage School. Are we still using the extra tent at the back of the school for dining?
Yeah, I think that's a question that trustee Eastep was asking, that we, we weren't initially asking, we, we weren't initially at the beginning of the year, having some staffing considerations on how we would supervise and make sure that we have that. We are looking though at parent volunteers led by the district, led by the Heritage PTO to look into. Can we get enough support to staff with volunteers along with the administrative team to run an outdoor tent, more or less?
When you said outdoor, I thought that was just like open air, but is the tent still up?
It is not, but we are looking at bringing back the tent, assuming we could staff it appropriately.
I wanted to build off something Jenny asked this time. So a lot of questions, we get a lot of questions about quarantining, obviously. And both of you use the term guidance, and I just wanted to be careful in understanding, when the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services or Wasna County puts structure on quarantining, it's not, is it guidance or is it a requirement on how to handle it?
Yeah, we, we have always followed the, the guidance. The masking is a mandate and we follow the guidance from the, the Wasna County Health Department. And so in terms of using the term mandate, guidance, I know there's some confusion around that. And we as a district need to sift through that as well. So with the masking, it's a mandate, the guidance is that we are testing a certain amount. And we have always worked collaboratively because, for example, every time that district nurse Hervey has to do an antigen test with her team, she has to record that, report it to the Wasna County Health Department, they look at the structure around it, determine if there's close contacts. They look at, is there any spread? So ultimately, if we were to somehow defy those recommendations, we, and that guidance, we would have a very hard time of working collaboratively with the Health Department to determine how our district is operating in the safest way possible. And so guidance, mandates, we're doing our best to sift through all of that and adjust to changing guidance and then respond to mandates as well.
Great. And then one other quarantine question, not to belabor, labor this, but it's, 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 I mean, we saw it last year. It's disruptive and we're thinking about the kids, of course, and the staff handling that. So we have our in-school and we have our out-of-school. So the question is about the out-of-school children in any grade. And I realize we, we saw some numbers there for Woodland Meadows and Pleasant Ridge, but this could be answered in any grade. How are, how are the staff handling assignments and handling activities for the students or, you know, assignments and, and things like that because we don't have Zoom this year and we're, we're doing things differently? Can you just speak a little bit about the, the, the learning components and an out-of-school quarantine and how they're handling that for different grades?
Sure, and I, I'm going to break it down by elementary and then secondary. And our teaching and learning team has been excellent at providing to support our instructional designers, reach out to teachers, especially if they are impacted significantly. You know, we look at some of those lower elementary grades that have a combination of kids in quarantine at home or some that are quarantining in school, and they are providing supports to meet with the teachers to say, okay, what are the best ways that we have to make sure that students that are home are still getting a level of instruction and that they can keep up with that work so that when they do return to school, they are still able to be, you know, hitting the ground running and not feeling that they are 10 days behind, for example. At the secondary level, we do have most of our staff that would have their Google Classroom set up where they could be providing assignments and then helping students, whether that's on their planning period or if students are connecting via email and providing those supports. But we do have to be careful that, you know, for our career tech ed classes, that looks a little differently when those classes are largely hands-on and that those teachers need to figure out creative ways to help those kids keep up with the classroom curriculum that, you know, Google Classroom might not work the same way. So, you know, there certainly is a level of autonomy of our teaching staff, but with the teaching and learning team's support, we feel confident that we can still provide those supports with, for our, our students that are at home, even though we're not zooming them in on a regular basis.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments around operations? It's a good idea to segment it, there's a lot of content.
So then we move to teaching and learning team questions that would be directed to Kara if you have any, or if you'd rather just-
No, that, that's, that's great.
I would, I wanted to thank, I really would like to thank the transition team. I mean, right from the beginning, a year, a year and a half ago, we heard terms like learning loss and that sort of thing. And I'm really glad that we, as well as many other people pivoted away from that to focus on the genuine, like what are the actual needs of the students? I do have a couple of specific questions, so if you want to. But, and I was so impressed, you, you knocked a bunch of them right out of the park. I mean, I won't belabor that, that long list of things you focused on for the elementary and for the secondary. But now the question I get is, how, you know, many and varied actions that you guys, your, your team is taking, how are you going to evaluate the impact of those? Is there some, are there some benchmarks or there, do you gather together weekly to say, to, just to codify? Like, you, you don't have the Carolyn Stouts Acadians graphs, but you do have other methods. I'm just curious as to what, how you're examining the impact.
Yeah, actually, I really appreciate you asking that question because back in August, when our team came together for the first time, with some new members as well, we did do some just visioning work together and talked about what would our one-year plan, three-year plan, five-year plan look like? And what will we, questions would we need to ask? And one of them was, how will we evaluate the success of our team? We also knew that we needed to get our mission in place pretty quickly so that we could roll out our newly formed team as a part of the instructional curriculum department to our staff so they knew what supports were available. So we focused on that and we are meeting every other week as a team, as a whole group. And one of our next questions is, how will we evaluate the success of our team? So we will be working towards that and in a future meeting, bring that back up and-
Okay, I'd love to hear the answer when you have it.
Yes, absolutely.
That would be great. Were you talking about Lincoln Learning or was it?
I was, yep.
So you had talked at one, one question that got me a little confused. There's a talk about the networking and, and you talked about combining tech classes from Dexter, Mylan. You may have said Manchester, maybe you said Chelsea, I don't remember. But does that mean the networking, does that mean in a smaller class, you might actually combine students from three, no, okay.
So you're referencing the previous Board of Education presentation I gave when I mentioned that?
It's in here.
Yep. Oh, sorry, is it actually written down? So I was like, no, I did not say that today. So yeah, so Mylan, Chelsea, Dexter, and Celine all utilize Lincoln Learning as their third-party vendor for their virtual experiences this year. And that has allowed me to work with the leaders inside of those districts to help create support materials for the families that are involved, has helped me to understand some of the components of state law that we needed to attend to. So we've been working in partnership behind the scenes in those different districts. Our students themselves do not interact across the platform. The platform itself is asynchronous. We did create at the request of the virtual families who are participating, a community list that they could opt into to share the other community, the other families who were also part of Lincoln Learning so they could, could connect to create social connections if they so chose. Not every family opted in, but it's a fairly robust list. We have 22 families with 25 students represented as our virtual family. So it's, like I said, it's a small but cherished group as a part of our Celine School system.
Thank you. I don't want to dominate, but I do appreciate that and I appreciate also the nine interventionists. Oh my gosh, that's, that's huge for this district and greatly appreciated. I had a question for Shannon, but I couldn't wait till, then I'll, then all my questions will be done. I just wanted to say, yeah, I'm looking forward to, to attending any of the three community conversations you've got coming up. And you, when you said, "I reviewed all the policies with my red pen," I went, uh-oh. I sort of glanced over at trustee, secretary Eastep. And you said, "We, we seem to be doing okay." But Shannon, I, I'm going to say this too, I think it'd be great if you could come to a future policy meeting so we can actually flip open the book and you can share some of your gleanings with us, like, you know, what you saw positive that Celine is doing and how we are on the right track already. And that would be very helpful to the policy committee, I think, and to the whole district.
Oh, absolutely. And the, the three trustees who attend the DEIAC meetings, I'll be doing a little, a little more, sharing what I found like in school board policy and stuff like that. But please invite me and I will be happy to share what I've found. And it's an ongoing review and reflection through the doc, well, that's what I plan to do because I have to keep going back to what's already here because it's already here.
I suspect you're reading them online. What you don't know is that printed out, it's a rather large pile.
I'll take it. I'll take it. I'll take it, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Michael. I, I just wanted to pause real quickly. I didn't want to move on from Kara unless there were other questions because I had one comment for Kara. Yeah, okay, Jenny, go ahead.
So I have the benefit of, of being in education. So a lot of what you're, what you were speaking of tonight, I can comprehend and I can, I can visualize what that looks like and appreciate that work. But we've been hearing from a lot of parents and even from some students who are wondering about how, how we can move forward. The, the data that Caroline showed today definitely highlighted some areas of focus for our younger grades. We know that, I know personally in my own household, that there are some, even in high school. And so I wondered if you could give us for, I know that maybe, maybe you have to come back to do this, but just a brief picture so that parents and students can visualize what this looks like, parent-facing or student-facing? What does coaching, how does coaching impact student achievement? How does intervention at Heritage impact student success? So if you could just maybe like, if a student is identified or if a cohort is identified, what happens?
Caroline, do you want to speak to the interventions first?
I was ready to pop up on that one.
I thought it might be you, but I also want some high school insight too because I noticed this team is heavy lower L. And so I just want to make sure that we are answering the questions because I know it's happening, but I want it to be transparent and out there. So, thank you.
Thank you. And you're right, we, we sometimes speak too fast and don't give enough details. What does it actually look like? So it looks a little bit different at the K three than at Heritage. The, so let me ask you this, do you want the whole thing or do you want just like the student experience?
That's what I was saying, like it might be another meeting that you come back to, but I think it's really important because like I said, a lot of this was Ed you speak and a lot of it I can visualize because of my, my background and my understanding. But I know that that's not the case and these are big concerns that we've been hearing about for many months now. So if you could just give us like a little snippet.
I'll try and then you tell me if it was enough.
All right.
Okay, so we start off, luckily we are not starting off blind. We start off with this cohort looking at where they are now, right? So we anticipate where they might be based on the end of last year, but things happen over the summer. So we start off by just collecting data, getting to know our students as, as individuals. And then we all have a meeting where we look at that and we talk about both the kind of big picture trends, kind of the, I'll call them like tier one goals, right? Like what, what I shared are not necessarily concerns that are individual student concerns, right? They're like big picture, if we have more than 20 students who are struggling with something, we all need to do something about that, right? So we look at those and then we also get all the way down to like the individual student level to say, all right, so here are kind of our, our bigger things that we're all going to work on. We've also had some opportunities for teachers to talk to the previous grade level about, you know, where they left off and what things students still needed when they left them. And then we get down to what is actually going to happen to support the students who are significantly behind, more so even than the graphs may show. And then we plan that support. So again, I wish, gosh, I should just always have a triangle with me, like always. So some things are going to happen at the base with all students, right? So we're going to adjust some of our instruction to say, you know, in second grade, we might be used to students coming and being able to just rattle off all of those basic letter sounds and even some of our, our controlled vowels and some of our, you know, blends and digraphs and things like that. That's teacher speak, but just basically like a good, a good level of like base phonics knowledge, right? This year, that's not the case. So there's something we need to do with the whole group. We need to go back and we need to make sure that those are solid before we can build on it. There's a couple of different ways to do that. There's the tier one instruction, right, adjusting like the mini lesson. The teachers are also going to be meeting with groups within that Reader's Workshop, so they might be doing some strategy groups around that. And then we have that time during which we also offer intervention that we call best fit, if you're Pleasant Ridge or Woodland, or win at Harvest, or team time at Heritage. That's a half hour of time where we do some extra differentiation, kind of more so than a teacher could really realistically do on their own. And we are dedicated this year to mixing all of our students safely, still distance as much as we can, but to really allow us to further address some of those gaps. So what that means is during that best fit, win, team time, that half hour, say we have four sections of a grade, those four teachers are going to be teaching some of their students, but maybe some students from another class as well, because we are focusing on what students kind of lowest area of literacy need is. And it's allowing us to form some groups that are going to be above grade level and focused on things that maybe are from the next grade or two grade levels up in terms of content. It's going to allow us, this year especially, to go back and do some additional kind of catch-up, for lack of a better word, instruction with bigger groups. And it's going to allow us to also work with some of those students who need tier two and tier three intervention without the stigma of being pulled out of class and potentially missing some valuable instruction, although we work hard not, for that not to happen. So that is if the students come back and they talk about best fit or winner team time, that's what that is. I have like lots of examples of the types of things that happens, but they range everything from, you know, students sometimes write for like their school announcements. And at Heritage, Amanda Webster has done some really cool things with some social issues book study. And that really allows us to have that time also to accelerate the learning of those who are struggling the most. We also collaborate with our special ed staff and our EL tutors to really schedule things as tightly as possible so that students aren't missing instruction when they're getting that additional support. So we have this meeting, we decide all this stuff. Then parents get a contact from the teacher generally, and if nothing else, they get a letter and they get some information on what the focus is going to be during that intervention time, what they might be able to do to help. Some students who are significantly behind would also get what's called that IRIP, that Individual, Individual Reading Intervention Plan, that's part of the third grade reading law, which is kind of just one more piece that allows us to partner with students, with families around student success. And then we run those same groups for about six to eight weeks. So we have a good amount of time to really get some good things done and then we reevaluate. And we regroup, we say, how did we do on the big goals? How did we do on the individual student goals? You know, learn from- You know, learn from that data, learn from their success and the areas where maybe they didn't gain as much as we wanted. And then we regroup again. And we do that four times. And we do that over and over again, basically until we get it right. And when I talk about intensifying instruction, that's similar to the process we would use like in our IT meeting. Or that's more of like a student study team. If a teacher brings a concern about an individual student to like the broader problem-solving group. Where we just keep trying something new, analyzing the variables, looking at whether it worked. And then using that data to figure out how we can tweak it in a smart way. Because time is really important and we can't waste it on things that aren't going to work. But we have to give our instruction enough time to be effective. Okay, did that answer some of it?
That was really helpful, I think. If we get any further feedback, I'm sure I can point them in your direction.
Sounds great.
Thanks. Thanks. So that was for our K-five. And then Cara, you're going to speak a little bit to our.
Yeah, thanks. So I think I'm going to go with the, give an example of, so I'm going to click back through, oh, sorry. Anna, somehow I messed that up. Can you go slide thirteen? Keep going. There, stop there. Perfect. So one of the things that has continuously risen to the top for me is how much excellent programming and excellent teaching we had in place. Prior to the pandemic that we can leverage to support our students. So I gave the example of some of our student programming like web and link. Well, that also exists for our academic programs. We don't have direct coaching at the secondary level per se. We do provide one-to-one support for staff as they identify different goals and we provide coaching for new teachers. Our support cycles for our new teachers. But when you dig into the goals, when we think about what's happening with our building goals, at the high school and middle school level, there's a focus on assessment. And within those assessments, a piece of that is identifying student needs and those formative pre-assessments. And knowing that we might have to build some bridges from previous years. So we've been emphasizing that with the teachers. And then they're inherently built inside of the work that they had previously been doing pre-pandemic that we're returning to. So I'll use the middle school as an example and Heritage. So they're focusing on standards-based learning and teaching. And as a part of that, if you are in a classroom that is standard space, the teachers have clear learning targets that would be at grade level. They would give an assessment or pre-assessment to determine that is formative. It's not a penalty against a student to determine where the students are within those classes. And then the differentiation would happen as a response to the formative assessment results. Students would be grouped and then teachers would provide small group instruction in order to meet those students' needs. Based upon where they are in relationship to their mastery of the learning targets that have been identified for that particular unit. In addition, part of that assessment process, including at the high school, includes reteaching and reassessment if the students haven't mastered that content. And that's something that both the Heritage and the middle school have been working on for quite a while. And the high school is beginning to work on as a part of the balanced assessment program. And so those are things that are in play that we will be continuing to maximize in order to meet the students' needs coming into this year. Knowing that there may be students who need additional supports.
So just a quick follow-up. I want to make sure that we're representing the questions that we've been getting. So how is this being explicitly communicated to staff so that it can then be properly communicated to parents? So when we're hearing staff say that there isn't really any change from before, how can we address that so that that is more adequately? Because I know from my own students and from also from being in the district. That individualization and planning for students is the center of what our teachers are doing. And so maybe it doesn't feel like it's any different because they've already been individualizing instruction. But I feel like in a year where we're still in this pandemic, it's even more critical that we're very, that we have that at the forefront of our thinking. So how can we be explicit in that message?
Sure. So one of the things that we are structured around in our organization is our teacher-leader cohort. So we have teacher leaders in each of the grade levels and departments, young fives through our young adult program. And we meet with those teachers regularly. We went with them prior to the start of the school year to talk to them about some of the common language, to talk about the importance of asset-based language. Celebrating the accomplishments, avoiding deficit mindsets. While also reminding them of some of the tools we put into place in the previous year. We're actually meeting with them tomorrow morning at seven forty-five AM and then tomorrow afternoon. In order to come back to some of the components that will best help guide their individual departments. And that could be something that we talk about to highlight in terms of the messaging and reassuring parents that the work that's happening to support our students is there. And even emphasizing some of the pieces that we had in place that are responsive and maybe even more progressive than other school districts who are bringing students back in this environment.
Thank you very, very much. I appreciate that. Thanks for bearing with me with the wrong question.
It's hard when we have an expert up here as well, right? Cara, I just had one thing and thank you, Michael, because benchmarking was what I was having on my mind too. So would love to come back to that at another time. I really appreciated that you discussed anxiety and you included the staff. I think that's incredibly important. So thank you for addressing that with both students and staff. And thank you in advance for coming back and discussing with us how we're going to benchmark and hold ourselves accountable to those student achievement markers. Any other questions for Cara? Okay, yeah.
All right, so we hired nine additional literacy interventionists. What does that bring our total to?
That's actually a Caroline question.
Sorry, I thought.
Okay, so I have three confessions. I misspoke three times. One, the I-RIP that I mentioned, I forgot to say that that's lower elementary only. I guess I didn't misspeak. I just didn't fully say what I wanted to say. Two.
You did say it was part of third grade reading law.
Okay, sorry. Two, not all teachers are doing team time this year at Heritage. So we're still not up to full implementation. We're working towards that. We're expanding every year. So not all Heritage kids would come home and talk about team time. But the other one is, so when I said we have nine new, it's nine new, it's not necessarily nine additional. So again, not that, you know, you don't need to know all the details of all the movement that happened. Basically, we hire some really, really amazing people who happen to have teaching degrees. And those really amazing people get hired elsewhere. Go figure. So we have, and last year, we actually operated with not a complete team. Because again, go figure, in the fall, not a lot of people wanted to start this job in the middle of the pandemic on Zoom. So last year, we were down a couple of interventionists or tutors. And so this year, we're back up to a full team. So we have nine new people. We have added a tutor at Pleasant Ridge. So an addition of a staff member from two years ago. Last year, we were one down. So again, if you follow my math here. So basically, at Pleasant Ridge right now, we have five interventionists. They are, because that is a school receiving Title I funds. They are working on reading and math, which is why they have more. And their MTSS coordinator, Sherry Soonin, has also joined the teaching and learning team, as you saw. So she's going to be having some extra support there to compensate for some of her role being different now. So five at Pleasant Ridge. At Woodland, we had three last year. We have three this year. The Woodland team, but one is new. The Woodland team has been phenomenal because they've also been going across the pond and supporting Heritage some in the morning. Heritage has three new from last year. We had hired one in the beginning of last year, but again, left for a different job six weeks in. And then at Harvest, we have a new coordinator. And then we have one new interventionist as well. But total of three interventionists there. So again, not an addition of a person. It's just that last year, we operated without a coordinator there. Does that make sense? So three tutors, one interventionist at Harvest. Three tutors, I'm sorry, three tutors, one coordinator at Harvest. Three tutors, one coordinator at Woodland, who also works at Heritage. Three tutors at Heritage. The coordination is between me and Erin Grunus, the coordinator at Woodland Meadows. Five tutors at Pleasant Ridge. So if I'm doing the math right, I think that's fourteen.
And thank you for that. All right, my next, I think it's going to be you again, though. All right, so.
Go.
Humor me as a high school, more high school expert. So can I flip, can we flip to the Acadians graphs?
Yeah.
So I'm wondering, you have focus goals. So we saw, we identified our students and then we like flip to the next one, please. So what drives these focus areas? Was it based on the data that we received from that cohort? Is it more norms for that particular grade level?
Good question. How long do I have?
No, I just wanted to know like the simple answer to what I just asked.
Yeah, so, well, I could talk about it a lot. So basically what I did here, and this is a much summarized version of the one that's linked on one of the first slides. That I said, like, you can see that if you have, you know, a bunch of time on your hands and your board. So really what I did here is I just pulled out a couple of the subtests that are most concerning and most foundational. So these are all indicators. Meaning if you think about this as like, you know, you're bringing your child to the pediatrician and they're getting like the basic vitals, right? Like, are they growing? Is their weight right? Is their temperature right? This is what this is.
That's what I thought.
And then we dive more into it, if that makes sense.
No, that's what I thought.
So yeah, this is basically saying, red flag. Some of these very foundational skills are concerning. And because these are things that if we don't address them now, we know they have implications all the way up. We want to kind of highlight that. Does that make sense?
No, that's fair.
Awesome. If you have an hour or some time, I can give you more.
I'm good right now. All right, and my third one is for you. And it's, you talked about students undergoing professional development on culturally responsive instruction. I think it's fantastic. I'm wondering where that's built into the students' day? I'm wondering like what class, how we're going to build it in, that kind of thing. Do we have a plan for that?
Student, like for students.
You talked about, I thought you, under your plan for P, I thought you had said for students that there would be professional development.
Parents.
Oh, I thought you said for students. Okay.
But that would be, that would be good. That could be like phase four.
Well, I interpreted that way.
Phase four.
So it's for parents?
Yes, for parents, yes. And community, which could include students who are interested more in learning about what they're learning about. But yes, parents.
I'm sorry, I misinterpreted that.
No worries.
Susan, did you have anything else?
Brad, are you done? Okay.
I had a question about the math intervention, but I think she answered that, yeah. At, that it's just at Pleasant Ridge. I think last time you gave this presentation, I had asked about that too.
Yeah, and we've dabbled in it at Woodland Meadows as well. But to be honest, like, you know, the funding is there at Pleasant Ridge and we're also required to do it, which is kind of a nice bonus. We will look to expand to the other buildings. Right now, we're focusing on literacy. But what's nice is we are collecting that math data now at all the schools that started last year for the first time. And so we are going to have a really good baseline. And so we're hoping to use that to sort of look at expanding that to the other elementaries.
Okay, and maybe you or somebody else. So I've been hearing about, you know, elementary and high school. So I got to get in my middle school there. And just interested in some of those supports, especially our sixth graders coming in from, you know, Heritage. And, you know, missing a year and a half, right, in person possibly. And now in this whole new environment.
Yeah, so we have, we have had some supports at the middle school in the past. And actually Laura Washington and Lindsay Young, they're very interested in moving that forward. We're meeting next week to kind of start talking more about that. Everything from their problem-solving process around IT and when students pop up that way, how to best support them. To also looking at, can we bring an MTSS framework fully to the middle school at some point? However, you know, going back to what Steve said about, we just, we know that the compounding effects of early gaps are best addressed young. And so right now, we have focused most of our resources at trying to prevent that. And that has meant for a while, kind of pulling back from some middle school supports and focusing more on building up what we're doing at Heritage. To try to get to full implementation there so that we have even fewer students going in the middle school. The sixth grade is, you know, operates more like an elementary schedule. Beyond that, it's also a lot of scheduling considerations. But it's definitely something that I know Lindsay and Laura are interested in, we're going to be working on.
Yeah, and we don't want to forget that middle population, right?
And I do want to add to that as well because we use some of our ESTR funding. For our units of study for reading and writing are built by Teachers College and the Reading and Writing Project, the Lucy Cockens units of science that I'm referencing. And we had used their virtual units last year. And they actually have ramp-up units coming into, for this year, to support students to build some of those bridges. So we did make the purchases of those units in order to best support teachers in providing curriculum that would have helped build those bridges between the years of being virtual slash hybrid. And on that COVID roller coaster and quarantine roller coaster too, this year, where we're more fully in person.
Awesome. Yeah, and I just want to thank you all for your work that you're doing. And it's so much, I, you know, I would love to see like throughout the year, more, I guess, details on certain areas. Because you all have a lot going on. And then I'm super excited about what you're doing, Shannon. I know you're very respected here in the community. And from, you know, the admin and supports that you've had in the past or have given in the past and are continuing to do. And I'm excited to work with you, as Michael said, with the policy team and with DEI. And it sounds like a good plan. I'm excited. Thanks.
Sorry, Steve, this might be a question for you, I'm not sure. But can someone speak to the decision to move away from NWA for K-three?
I'll get her shot and then I'll phone a friend. How's that? So the decision to move away from NWA was a conversation over the last several years, actually. For the last several years, we have really, we've been trying really hard to use that data to drive instruction. We have worked with a lot of NWA consultants. And we have really struggled to do that. Because basically what we have found, in full honesty, is that NWA was really good at telling us who was doing really well and who was not doing really well. Which we already knew. We have found some, now we have everyday math assessments, we have Acadians. We have a bunch of different ways to assess students and already tells that. When it came to actually using that to drive instruction, whether it's in small groups or individualized instruction or whole group. It was almost too little and too much information at once. Meaning that it wasn't assessing some things that we really needed to assess directly, right? Like a computer cannot assess how well a student can segment the word black or white or blue or green or red, right? And at the same time, it was giving us these really long reports with all of these bands and a lot of detailed information. So and every time we got to the point where we had a consultant and they were supposed to help us. They would ask for a couple thousand dollars more to give us the report that would help us. So I know a lot of other districts have used it. I know a lot of districts have used it for compliance as well. And basically, we came to the point where we said, we have all the assessment we need to be compliant. We have the assessment that we really use to drive instruction. And yes, it's nice to have one more just to kind of check, but it's not worth fifteen thousand dollars. Is that, okay?
Yeah, no, I, from my vantage point, again, being an educator and having used that tool for a number of years. When I would look at individual students and the interventions or the pieces that were, what NWA was telling me the student needed. It was basically the kitchen sink. It wasn't targeted and explicit like some of the other assessments. So I can see that. Thank you for explaining that. And also explaining how the other assessments can meet those needs. And not just for compliance, but for explicitly and providing targeted instruction.
I think we're okay over here. Any other comments on the side? No, no. Candace?
Yes, just one more comment on the culturally responsive piece. Thank you, Shannon, for putting together such a great strategic plan. I appreciate the phased approach and just have some other comments, but I'll save those for another time. But specifically on the parent and community outreach piece, I think that is so important. And I was really glad to see that in there because there seems to be a misperception about, you know, what is culturally responsive? And what does that really mean? And what is my child going to be learning? So can you speak to how we will be engaging families in those discussions? Will there be multiple opportunities, you know, that kind of thing? Just the outreach plan for that.
Yes, so actually, I'll be meeting with Steve and Cara and Anna next week to kind of put that into wet cement, if you will. But the vision is to offer a three-part. But the vision is to offer a three-part series. Hopefully, parents attend all three so that they can get a full picture of this. The first session is actually a defining of what it is and what it isn't in a very general way, keeping in mind that at the same time, I'm going to be encouraging Celine teachers to define what it is for Celine. Celine's population, Celine's demographics call for a unique definition in and of itself. So that would be a very general, what it is, what it isn't. The second one will be more of a question and answer, if you will, where parents will have the opportunity, parents and community members will have the opportunity to, to ask specific questions based on what they learned or what they read or what their experiences were in the first session and address that. And I'm calling it needs and fears because we all have both, right? All of us, when it comes to our children, we have needs and we have fears. And so I am really inviting those questions, concerns and those statements of needs into the space to, I want to hold space for them and I want to make sure that parents understand that the district is interested in those, in those voices, those concerns, those needs and fears. And then as a part of that, I want to put fears to rest. And that's where kind of I will be taking those and looking at, going back to what it is, what it isn't, and why it is for all children. The third piece in the spring, so I said I had like visions of grandeur, but I would really like to look at how culturally responsive instruction is in the community or how it should be in the community. Because a big piece of culturally responsive instruction is connecting what kids are doing in the classroom to their community. So when a kid goes from their school library to the public library, they should still see themselves in, in the books and everywhere they go, they should see themselves. And so I would like to invite people from the community and to talk about where kids fit into community learning and how that can be. Now, so again, that's more visionary. If I can't like pull that off, I want to talk about the role community plays in educating kids. And so within the larger community, kids have a community they belong to. And connecting to that community, connecting the classroom to that community is the key for many kids to learning. And I can, I mean, I can give a really like just basic example. When I was in high school, my math teacher referred everything to Disney World. Like, he thought Mickey Mouse was really cool, Mickey Mouse ties, every example was about Disney World rides. Well, most of the kids in my class had never been to Disney World, right? But they had been to Cedar Point. So perhaps being a little reflective about, maybe we replace Disney World with Cedar Point, then this can be more relevant, more responsive to the kids in the classroom. So that is, that's kind of the goal there. I, I know from experience that there have been concerns about communication, transparency, but I also know that over the last three years, parents have reached out to me before I was in, you know, in official capacity through my social media direct message, to ask me questions, to talk to me about these things, these issues. And the number one question I got from parents over the last three years is, where can I go to learn about this? And so I got my chance to like provide a place where parents can go and learn about it. And so I, I believe that I'm meeting that need. If I'm one person in my small network in this community where I would get ten to fifteen parents calling, texting or DMing me asking, where can I go to learn about how to support this in my home, there's probably a hundred more out there. I'm just, you know, like, one little person. So, and to kind of backtrack to what Brad asked, this diagram may have been what was a little misleading. At the top where it says meeting the needs of all students, I'm looking at the teachers and the parents as being partners in that by getting this education first. And it, it obviously filters to the students, but it's not directly instruction from me to the students. It's really going to be through teachers and parents. I hope that clarifies it a little bit, so, good. Any other questions?
Just wanted to mention on the big vision piece, CRI and the community, there is the City of Celine DEI Task Force that I know is doing some educational efforts and things like that, so definitely would recommend connecting with.
It's on the list. Thank you. Yes, I have plans to reach out to Public Safety, to Community Ed, or like the, the Celine Library, it uses an example, and city government as well. It's, it's a plan. I'm going to be ambitious to have them give input on that connection between learning and the community and how that can be responsive to kids. We'll see.
All right, thank you. I just had one final question because I know we need to get moving and I, I know we have guests waiting to, to have the next presentation. Caroline, I was just curious if we could have a copy of the deck afterwards? And then obviously, COVID and the disruption of learning is not anything that is unique to Celine, is not anything that is unique to the United States. But I, I'm curious how, if we can get some, some data, and again, it doesn't have to be tonight, how does this all stack up? If we look at our, our country, where are we at? I mean, when, when we think about reading, we think about the, the incoming first graders or whatnot, it would be, it would be really helpful to kind of put it in the broader lens. Thank you for the deep conversation. This is, this is, I know, it was, is a while, this is important, this is incredibly important. So just wanted to thank all of you very much and for your colleagues who aren't here as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next scheduled report, Series Three Bond, Celine Middle School Renovations. Dr. Latch, if you would like to introduce your guests?
Yes, I'm going to actually introduce Rex Clary, who has been, you know, doing a great job for a number of years managing projects and working with architects and building construction management team. And, and it really has been a key in helping us move forward with, with our buildings and our projects. So Rex is going to introduce the King Scott and Clark team.
And that's because we've chosen good team members to work with. Good evening and thank you to the Board of Education for allowing us to present tonight. Tonight, we start our third and final phase of the Safe, Form and Dry Bond that was passed by the community of Celine in the fall of 2015. Been six years. Thank you to the community for trusting the Celine leader, the leadership of Celine Area Schools to use these funds from Phase One and Two to, to create safe and secure buildings, positive learning environments. We have purchased twenty new school buses, classroom furniture, improved energy efficiency and other district improvements that make Celine Area Schools a place for great learning that's happening every day. Tonight, we will continue to address the needs that we, along with King Scott, identified in 2015 to improve our Celine, uh, middle school energy efficiency and comfort in the classroom, along with updating our middle school gymnasium. King Scott and Associates, who worked with the district during Phase One, will be working with us again during Phase Three. Our construction manager for this project will be Clark Construction. And tonight, I have the team from King Scott and Associates, I have Rob Atkins, President and Civil Engineer, Sarah Hazel Swart, Senior Design Architect, Dana McCollin, Interior Designer. From Clark Construction, I have Rebecca Timberlake, Pro, Senior Project Manager. And from Satrionic Energy Solutions, we have Kevin Bachi, Mechanical Engineer and Project Manager.
Good evening and thank you for having us tonight to report on this project. So Rex did the introduction, which was my part tonight, so. Thank you, Rex. Appreciate that. So real quick, we're going to go through the project, we're going to highlight the mechanical improvements and then the gym renovation. Once we get through that, we'll go over budget and timeline quickly and then we'll open it up to questions when we're done. All right? Okay, Kevin, you're up.
Good evening. I'm going to get us started with a quick discussion on the boiler replacement scope for the middle school project. Existing boilers in the middle school are original to the building. As you see in the photograph, they take up a pretty significant footprint. The two existing boilers are anywhere between seventy to eighty percent efficient when it comes to energy consumption. As part of this similar project, we're also going to replace the water heaters. And those existing water heaters today are approximately eighty percent energy efficient. So the, the new equipment, the new boilers, the new water heaters will drastically improve the energy efficiency, along with occupant, occupant comfort and maintainability of the system for the middle school as it relates to heating. The two, or the two existing boilers that take up that large footprint you saw in the first photograph, those will be replaced with four smaller boilers. The photograph on the left represents the new boilers that will replace those two existing school buses in that room. The, the four new boilers are, are a combined thermal efficiency of ninety-six point two percent. And the new water heaters, the photograph on the right-hand side, the energy efficiency of the water heaters are ninety-nine percent. As part of this project and a lot of boiler replacement projects is the controls, the building management system that goes into controlling, monitoring. The system will be better adept for energy usage and be able to see what it's doing and how it's doing and be able to change the, return water temperatures and, and improve system efficiency in real time as the system is functioning and operating. Along with this boiler replacement, we're also going to connect the existing electrical meters to the upgraded control system as it relates to energy consumption on the electrical side. So the, the pumps, the motors, the drives that are circulating the water, the hot water that is being produced by these boilers. Another project, it's, it's a small add-on to the boiler replacement, is the return water for the group toilet rooms adjacent to the main office, as well as the sink in the main office. That water, from what I understood, took a long time to get warm if it got warm. And so what we did, we, we addressed that return water system so that way you won't have to wait for five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten minutes to get warm water through those lavatories. And that, that summarizes the boiler scope. Now for the fun part, the sexy gym stuff, that's, that's next. They're pretty cool from an engineer's perspective. Thank you.
Hi, good to be here. Thank you for having us. So this should look familiar. These are photos of your existing middle school gymnasium. Some of the things that we took a look at, we talked to staff, we talked to some of the administration, considerations are that the existing wood floor, as you probably all are aware, the center section of that gym does have a wood floor. It's in great shape, the striping and all of that is fairly, fairly new or at least in good enough condition to just leave that portion of the floor alone. The remainder of the floor is an old tartan floor. I think it's had a couple of coats on it. It will be removed. And in its place, a new athletic flooring, this slide indicates, it's a Polastic Flooring, that's a brand name. We'll be doing some competitive bids with a couple of different types of floor. Court markings on the side courts on this new athletic flooring will be all similar types of courts that are there now and they, we're just going to change colors and, and make them function a little bit better. We are going to also add a track straightaway. So evidently, you know, there's, during some indoor practices for track meets, you're going to be able to do, we can get about a seventy-yard straightaway lane that you can't do the way the track is configured currently. We're going to get new bleachers. There's a whole series of new athletic equipment, a lot of that stuff in there, the basketball backstops and all of that is original. Some new water coolers and especially bottle fillers, which in the age of COVID is a much better thing, and some new scoreboards. So this slide just shows you the layout of the gym. We're looking at this, north is just about up. You enter the gym on the right side of this slide and, and come in on the end zone. Currently, you know that the bleachers stack in the middle of the gym, so the track goes behind them. Those existing bleachers will come out. We're going to do a new set of bleachers. I'm going to, forgot to take this off, make it a little easier. The new bleachers on the south end of the gym will be larger than the current stack. We had to take a look at ceiling height and all that and make sure that we're not getting too close to the ceiling and those sorts of things. But there'll be about just under a thousand seats in that new stack. And there is potential on the north side of that gym, if you ever want to add some additional bleachers, it's possible to, to be able to do that. And moving those bleachers makes it a lot easier for supervision, so those, those current bleachers now kind of become a barricade and hiding places and things. The other things that you'll see on the slide, the two yellow boxes at the north end of the slide are, represent batting cages. There is one in there currently, it's on the south end of the gym, but it would conflict with the new bleachers. And so we're going to do two smaller ones. And actually, staff indicated having two, a little bit shorter ones are probably a better thing. More and smaller is better to get more kids in using them as opposed to one longer one. Scoreboards are in currently kind of an odd spot on those angled walls. And so those are going to get relocated to the, the far ends of the gym. It actually works pretty nice and better as we push those bleachers back to the south wall, that you'll be able to see the scoreboards a little bit better. And then you're all probably familiar with the existing press box. There will be a small scoreboard as well on the face of that existing press box. We're getting, put, we're going to put in a new pole vault box and cover and then add a couple new basketball backstops in addition to replacing ten existing basketball backstops that are, I believe, original to the building from the sixties. And then the last part are divider curtains. There are two existing divider curtains in there and those will get replaced. So bleachers look a little bit like this. We did a little bit of modeling in there so we could visualize some things. There'll be seventeen rows. We're going to maximize the length, which is just about the length of that wood floor area and, as I said before, just under a thousand seats. And then flooring. And Dana's going to chat a little bit with you about colors and things. But this diagram gives you a representation of the types of court markings. We did spend a lot of time with staff going over colors of court lines and, and trying to get things that, things you want to stand out to stand out and things that you don't use as much to recede into the, the floor a little bit, so it's a little easier to, to work with. But this gives you an idea also of how things go. The track stays generally in the same spot. The straightaway is at the north end of the gym and, and that's that.
I'll be real quick. So just wanted to highlight the color scheme of the gym remodel. Of course, the school pride, we're going to do Celine navy blue and gold. And you can kind of see that in some of the 3D images. And then also as part of this remodel, we would repaint the walls, looking at doing gray on the bottom, just to brighten up that gym a little bit. It's navy blue currently. The gray will brighten it up a little bit and then still maintaining the navy blue accents on the end walls and then behind the bleachers. And then last, just overall image, just kind of showing how everything works together. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. So Clark put together, oh, this is a little small, but Clark put together a detailed estimate based on King Scott's design development drawings, so this will stand for our budget. So the budget for this project, all inclusive of abatement and CM and architectural services is three million, one hundred fifty-two thousand and three hundred seventy-one dollars. And the timeline for this project, so in order to kind of beat some of the other projects that are going to be bidding, we want to get ahead of it to make sure we're securing good contractor pricing, competitive pricing. We're going to be bidding this out in the end of October, beginning of November. So November and December, we'll be bidding and awarding phases. We'll be back to Board of Education to get the contracts awarded in December. And then January through April will serve as our material procurement, we'll do some middles and make sure we're well coordinated to kick off this project, to start construction sometime in the end of May after the boilers are turned off and shut down for the heating season. And we will have the boilers back up and running in September for the next heating season. And the gym will be completed over the summer months while there's no students in the building. That's all we have, I believe. Open it up for questions?
So we have, you know, team members from both King Scott and Clark, so we'll open it up to questions.
First, I'll say this is a long time coming for this building. A very, very long time coming. And I appreciate all the work and, and just thank you again for your patience with regards to waiting.
Oh, no problem.
Appreciate that. Yeah, Brad, go ahead.
I just have one thing. So for a while there, we were seeing lumber prices and things go skyrocket, right? Tell me things have leveled off a little bit to where this project won't get away from us financially?
So as far as two-by-fours and that, yes. You, I think if you go to the hardware store- So, uh, as far as two-by-fours and that, yes. You, I think if you go to the hardware store now, you'll, you'll notice two-by, price of two-by-fours is. However, it, uh, it's a very volatile market. We are seeing, um, inc- still seeing increases in pricing on various things. For instance, all summer, we've been dealing with steel as, as it relates to getting roof joists and that sort of thing. But insulation, there's a number, um, we've had hardware, getting doors. So, um, that's one of the reasons, from a strategic standpoint, we're looking to get this, uh, bid as soon as possible this year for next year's work. Cause we wanna be in front of all the work that's gonna be coming out, and there is a lot of work that's gonna really hit the market next year, just like we're experiencing this year. We hear things may start settling down, but, you know, Clark monitors this every day, and, um, it's still very volatile. That's a great question. Other questions? Yes.
I just had a timeline question. So, um, May to September, I know school starts right around, you know, end of August, beginning of September. Is the goal to have it done early September, or are we thinking?
Well, the gym will be done in time when school starts.
Got it.
Yes. Um, as far as the boiler work and that, the, there may be some final work done that first month of school. But basically, the boiler system will be ready to go once the heating syst- or heating season starts.
Great.
Yeah, good question.
So you referred to the nineteen-sixties basketball backstop. Now, you may call that old. We call it an antique. And a treasured cherished item of Celine's history. I wonder what you plan to do with that, uh, junket?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't necessarily want it to show, you know, I don't wanna drive in my driveway and find it there one night, but I'm just kind of curious what you, like, um, I, I, I attended a couple of basketball refurbs at the University of Arizona, and we took the old floorboards. I know we're not doing the metal floorboards, I understand that, but they, they used the floorboards and sold them and refurbished them and made keychains and whatnot out of them. And I'm just, uh, you know, just, just saying, just talk to the community. They may have some ideas for you to.
We always entertain those type of things. Uh, we do run into that on occasion, so, um, I'm sure for the right price, we'd be happy to give you those backstops.
And now, as sexy as basketball courts are, I have a boiler question.
Yes.
It took us twenty years to go from a hundred percent efficiency to eighty percent efficiency. So what are, I don't know if you've had a glass of saline water, but, um, is there some guarantee or some system in place to make sure that the water's maybe treated perhaps before it gets into the system so that we're not replacing these boilers before the year tw- twenty forty-one?
Yep.
I mean, I'll, I'll still be on the board then, so.
Sure, yeah, absolutely. So the, the, the boilers, the, just, uh, they, they didn't start out at a hundred percent efficiency. They were always eighty percent. Um, that's the old technology. That's, that was as good as it got, right? So when those boilers were installed, that was what you could expect, was eighty percent. And as they deteriorate in age, um, they, they become less efficient. So that's where you get into that seventy percent, arguably. It could be that, it could be less. New technology today is up there at the ninety-six, ninety, ninety-six, ninety-seven, and it's, it's a function of the boiler type. And how, I, I, I could get into a long story, but I, I assure you, you don't want that.
Well, no, I've seen, I've, I've replaced boilers where you can hear the calcium cooking away at the bottom. Now, that's not what we're dealing with though, in these efficiency issues. Where it's completely different technology.
It's, it's just different technology, but, but water, water quality is still a, a, a component. And so as part of our specifications, that's, you know, the, the new equipment goes in, the water that's here that gets tested. There's, there's, uh, a, a parameter that the water quality, the pH level, the alkal- uh, you know, the, the alkalinity, all of that gets played into as it pertains to water treatment. And there'll, there'll be a, a specification for that, and the contractors who get awarded the project will have to adhere to the specifications as it relates to.
Thanks for that three-minute education on boilers. I appreciate that. I'm gonna take my mask off so you can see my face. Well, win-win.
And, and with glycol comes inhibitors also, and those inhibitors help prevent scale and any buildup of any solids in the, in the water. So it's, it's a, it's a, a win-win on chemical treatment, but that is part of the picture.
And who wants scale? Right, well, thank you. I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Oh, yep, Steve?
Well, I just wanna point out that the, the Clark-King Scott team, um, is, uh, the best. I mean, they, they've been working with us for quite some time, and in a very collaborative fashion, very smart, uh, creative. And then the way in which they're working with Rex and our team, with Kurt, Miranda, Anna, Kara, and, and the like. The process has been excellent, meeting on a regular basis to more or less hold each other accountable, that we're hitting timelines, being very communicative about what's happening, and therefore myself as the superintendent feeling very confident in, in the timeline and, and, and being very, uh, transparent about what's gonna happen. And Rob talks a little bit about there is this fluctuation in pricing, and that that's already being discussed. And so we're having those conversations, and just, it really is an excellent example of collaboration amongst three groups in this case. So we really do thank everyone for your efforts.
Yeah, thank you. It's certainly a team effort, for sure. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Um, I wanna be cognizant of time at nine oh three. I can see Brad. Um, so I'd like to please entertain a motion to recess at nine oh three PM for reconvening, um, in about ten minutes, um, at nine thirteen.
I will move to recess for ten minutes.
I'll support. All right, Brad, thank you, and Jenny, support, thank you. We are in recess until roughly nine thirteen. Okay, thank you. Welcome back. Uh, it is nine fifteen, so just a couple minutes late. But we'd like to move on to, um, one of two discussion items for this evening, M A S B delegate assembly. I think this should be pretty short and, and easy, but, um, wanted to talk to the team. So we have our, our annual, um, conference for M A S B coming up in, in November. And one of our requirements as part of that organization is to have a delegate there in person voting at six PM on the eleventh of November. So I needed to talk with this team to see who that person would be and who that alternate would be in case that person could not attend at six PM on the eleventh of November. Um, I know some of us plan on going. I know some of us have conflicts. So I just wanted to throw that out, uh, and to see who would be there Thursday. I know Susan, if you wanted to comment on your availability because you have other responsibilities there on Thursday, you wanted to say something about that?
So, um, the delegate assembly is actually part of what, um, I do being on, um, or whatever's gonna be presented and voted on.
So the Delegate Assembly is actually part of what I do being on, or whatever's going to be presented and voted on is part of the MASB Committee Resolutions and Bylaws that I'm part of. And I contacted the leader, Cheryl, who had emailed about the delegates. And she said that the people who are on the committee are delegates and go through this process. So I will already be there as a committee member, so I'm willing to be a delegate. But I guess if there is somebody with a burning desire to vote, I'll be fine with that because I did have an opportunity to, you know, to be part of that. My first time I went to MASB, I went to the assembly. And you actually get 10 points for just attending, FYI, if you're around.
Okay.
So, but yeah, I'm happy to be the delegate or alternate.
Okay.
If somebody else...
Is any other, I can speak for Dennis, and I should have announced this at the beginning. Dennis is ill, so we're missing him tonight, and we'll hopefully welcome him back at the next board meeting. I don't think he is planning to attend on Thursday. Anyone else planning to attend on Thursday? Michael says no.
Oh, well, just work done.
So it sounds like Susan is willing. I'm planning on going Friday morning, so I'm happy to be an alternate, if that's okay with the team. If not, I'm happy to also go just Friday morning. So I think that concludes our discussion, and then we can have that as an action item in the next section. Moving on to our next discussion item is the Saline Area Schools Board of Education. It should say Standards of Practice. So just to give, and I heard we had some public comment on this, and I wanted to just give a little bit of history on this. So the board has been engaging in professional development now for the past, I want to say a month or so. So we had one session that was facilitated by Mr. Dave Kellips. Dave is who we worked with from MRI, and he assisted us with the superintendent search. As part of the fee that we paid for that, we got several services that were, I don't want to say free, but they were included. Some was coaching for our new superintendent. And one was the offer to facilitate, what in historical context has kind of been called a retreat, right? A retreat for the board where we engage in professional development. We did have some audience participation, so that was great. We do plan, hopefully at the next meeting, to share a couple of slides from that, at least a few slides from that professional development evening on superintendent and board relationships and roles and responsibilities and best practices. And so we can speak to that there. But he had something that he said a lot of other school boards do, and he suggested that we think about this, and it's called a Standards of Practice document. Saline Area Schools currently has our board policy, which is on our website. We also currently have our board operating procedures, which are also on our website. Not every board has board operating procedures. They all have policies. So he said we were already in a really good space with what we were doing, with the actions that we're living through, our policies and our procedures. But he proposed that we think about this, and it really resonated with me particularly because I always think of the new year as starting September 1st. I always think of January 1st as halfway, you know, through the school year, and I really think about this as the beginning of our year because all of us work in education, and we have kids. And it just seemed like a really good thing to kind of discuss, starting off the school year, and just to, you know, reaffirm our commitment, reaffirm our practices and our procedures. And so I just thought of it in a very positive lens, something that we could convey to our community, convey to each other, and continue to hold each other to those standards. So again, nothing new, no changes, just kind of a more vocal declaration to kind of join our current policies and our procedures and our commitment to the community. I don't have to read them because I know it was in the packet. But again, nothing that we're not already doing is trustees. And something that we can include possibly our friend Julian in, we listed the trustees here. There was no intent to sign anything. It's not a resolution. It doesn't need to be signed by the secretary or president, as some past resolutions have been. But it's just kind of a co-authored commitment. And I would, one thing I would think about is maybe we think about how Julian can be added to this as well. So that was just the background on this, and I just welcome any discussion on the facets of this or the document overall. Yeah, Candace?
Yeah, as I was looking at some other board standards of practice, just to get a sense of like what else is out there, are we missing anything? I did find that the Michigan Association of School Boards has a board Standards of Governance document that has some suggestions for things like this. And one of the things that stood out in that was the idea of lifelong learning. The wording, you know, can be whatever we decide, but that we're all committed to lifelong learning. And I know we all are. We talk about it, and we're doing our ongoing training and making sure that we're willing to learn and grow as we serve in this role. So I think that's something I'd like to see in something like this.
Great, Candace. That's a really good add and actually an edit to policy that Secretary Eastep and I made on conferences and lifelong learning last year. So thank you for your comment. Yeah, Jenny?
Just in hearing some feedback and then also thinking about these, I know that when Dave presented them to us, he presented them and kind of gave some information or maybe definitions of kind of what things mean. And I know often in our policies, Susan, that we have to have definitions, right, and glossaries for things. And so I think that a document like this can mean, or sorry, words in this document can mean different things to different people. So if we are going to adopt standards of practice, like for example Candace brought up lifelong learning, like what does that look like from a trustee, from inaction?
I appreciate, oh, go ahead, Brad.
No, no, no.
Well, I appreciate Candace that you mentioned that these were suggest, there were other suggestions from MASB, and I appreciate you Jennifer suggesting that there are certain words and terms that need definitions. Sorry, Anna, I was too far away from the mic. But for example, I work with the International Society for Technology and Education, ISTI, and in the various subcommittees, we work on norms of collaboration and norms of committee work, standards of practice there. Each of those groups generate their own standards based upon how that particular group, that committee works. The board does their own standards and discusses them, sometimes ad nauseam, until we reach the point where we drill down and boil it down, the statements down to something that everybody said, yeah, this is us. This is what we do. We got no issues. Absolutely consensus. And I guess my concern with this is that I don't know the provenance of these documents. I know they came from Dave Kellips and where they came from before. I'm unclear about that. I'm also a little concerned that Dennis isn't here, and I shared this concern with Jennifer. There's no surprise at this table. But there are other questions that I had had, which interestingly to me, I heard from some of the letters we received. I won't go into specifics, except in a couple cases, like how do we deal with nonpartisan positions? The fact that when some political parties, even without asking us, support us, whether we even belong to that political party or not, I find that a curious thing. It came up a couple times with Dave Kellip, that we should avoid, we should be nonpartisan. Totally, absolutely get it. So I guess the question I have is how does that bubble up and arise in our daily board work if we are partisan at all? And so I guess my concern about this list is that it's not ours yet. We don't own this. And I appreciate you putting it on the table, President Eastep, I'm sorry, President Steben. But I don't think it's ready for primetime personally. I think there are a lot of issues. There are questions I have about, is this our job, really? And I appreciate the lifelong learning one. That's great. Many of them raise the question, well, what if we do not reach the highest of ethical standards? Or what if we are not fiscally responsible? Or how does this look? Or how should this manifest itself? I mean, that's too many details, I know, for general statements. But then it starts, begs the question, do, why are we, why are we even putting these on the table? The second to last one, for example, critically analyze a superintendent, that's our job. I came to the table ready to do that job, and I didn't need a standard of practice to tell me that. But maybe there's some aspect of that practice that we as a board need to say. Critically analyze to the highest standard or to, based on the community or based on evidence, our superintendent. There's, to me, it's, I'm left hanging. It feels empty. A lot of these feel empty at this point. And that's why I would like to recommend that perhaps we discuss these at a retreat at some point. I understand it's nice to start off the year with something like this. But I, I'll say it one last time. I just, not ready for primetime. I just don't feel like I own these enough that I would put my name on them. I don't have enough questions answered yet.
Thank you, Michael. And I just wanted to acknowledge, yes, obviously, this is a conversation that should include Dennis. So definitely want to acknowledge that. Brad?
All right, so yeah, I want to reiterate that I agree he should be included as a part of this. And I want to say that like I'm a little bit of a mishmash of all three, like of you, and I appreciate that. You know, I do like the idea of definitions, right, of, you know, what, you know, nonpartisan. I mean, I wish, it's challenge, right? I know we all have our own like personal things, right, and that kind of thing. But at the same time, when we're here and we represent our students and we represent all of our students, and I really believe that we read feedback and we take it seriously. And I know that's so important to me. And so I ask questions about things, about people that voice concerns who think the same as me and think differently from me. And those are important to me. Those are important feedback moments for me. Those are important things. I cherish that. And so I kind of think I agree with Michael that this would be something for us as a team to talk more about before we adopt it. And I do like the idea of personalizing and making it a little more, a little more, you know, Saline Board of Education and that kind of thing. And so anyway, but I appreciate, but I also want to recognize the premise of this, the idea that we are trying to think about our students all the time, expectations all the time, you know, positive and disagreements. And anyway, I'm going to stop talking. But the reality is, I like it as a whole. I just think we need, I think we need to nail it down a little more.
Yes. Oops, excuse me. All of that. I know I expressed concerns about where this lies. And I think some of it was brought up, where it lies with our board operating procedures, our policies. I know we have an ethics policy, which some of this comes in, or the board superintendent relations, BOP. So just making sure that when we're thinking about if it's a retreat or something that we, you know, spend the time to like dive into it and commit to it as a board, that we not try to do like everything and just try to like focus on like, are we going to keep this board operating procedures? And I know we wanted to update it this year, and that didn't really come to fruition because we weren't getting any feedback or anything. So yeah, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, not repeating everything and that it be like a genuine conversation here. I like that you brought up the MASB, the, was it, yeah, you read it, the board guiding, like principles. And in that, and actually WISD has one as well, and I know some schools use that. But it's like guiding questions, right? And so I really, yeah, it's kind of like these overall overarching like points and goals, right? But then it's asking you to think about, are you doing that work, right? Are you, whenever you, you're at the board table and, you know, and he's giving a presentation and, you know, asking, are you thinking about like the students? Or are you, you know, just giving you good questions and reflections to help guide you. So yeah, I'd like to dive into maybe some other things and see what we can come up with.
I was just going to say, so what I'm hearing is you guys would like another special meeting. We are asking for that, right? But just really briefly, before we go back to Jenny to build off of what Susan said, I remember doing training at the WISD and seeing those table tents about when you're making, when you're voting and you're making decisions, those guiding questions, and I like that. So let's pull that into another conversation. Let's pull the MASB into another conversation. One thing I took a look at when reflecting on this was the, you know, what does a positive board look like? What does, you know, in rereading some of the content at MASB. And to Candace's point, this is why we're doing this. It is lifelong learning. That's why we invited Mr. Kellips back to join us and have conversations. And for those who, those of you who don't know, he is a former superintendent, and he's very familiar with all of these, all of these standards of practice and gives good advice. So that's the place it's coming from and a place of positive intent. Yeah, Jenny?
Just when Michael was talking and then when Brad mentioned it too, about making these our own and about making these Saline-specific, I'd also propose that maybe we look at the strategic framework and the compass and how those values and those ideals and those commitments are represented in these standards of practice. Those are guiding, guiding our district every day. So I think that it'd be important for our board to be guided by those things too. I know we are, but if we're going to have a document like this, I think that would be important.
Okay. Any other comments? All right, perfect. I'd like to move on to action items. I'd like to please entertain a motion to appoint Secretary Eastep as the voting delegate and President Steben as the alternate representing the Saline Board of Education at the 2021 MASB Delegate Assembly being held Thursday, November 11th, 2021.
So moved.
I was like, did I just say something wrong? At 6:00 PM. Moved by Michael. Thank you. Second?
Second.
I'll second it.
All right, Candace, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, seven zero. Thank you, Susan, for doing that. Appreciate that. And just let me know if it doesn't work out that you can't be there.
You could score 10 points if you're there.
I like points. I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the August 10th, 2021, closed session for the purpose of SASAA contract review as facilitated by Assistant Superintendent Ellis.
Very quick point of order. Should we be recommending a motion to table the Board of Education Standards of Governance? Or just?
It was just a discussion item.
Just, well, it's here. It's recommended motion. I've got it right here. Maybe it's an old agenda.
It's on an old agenda, yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. So sorry, Michael. So this is for the minutes from the August 10th, 2021, closed session for the purpose of SASAA contract review as facilitated by Assistant Superintendent Ellis?
I'll make the motion.
Brad, thank you. Support?
Support.
Thank you, Jenny. So because these are closed session minutes, Secretary Eastep will now pass out the minutes. They are labeled one through seven for trustees. And we'll take a moment to review the minutes, then we'll come back to vote on the minutes. If approved, those will go sealed into Betty Yonkey's file of closed minutes. Thank you. For one year. All right, so we'll just take a couple minutes to read this. And just so the audience knows, this is standard operating procedures for the Open Meetings Act with closed meeting minutes. And just so the audience knows, this is standard operating procedures for the Open Meetings Act with closed meeting minutes. Just let me know when you guys are ready. Okay. We have a motion by Brad, a second by Jenny. We'll go to vote. All in favor of approving these minutes, say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. If you can please do me the favor of passing these back to Susan. She'll count one through seven and then, and destroy. Yeah, you can just give it to her after if that's okay. So just acknowledge you have all seven back and we'll give Betty the envelope after today's board meeting. You have to acknowledge that we have all seven back. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
It's okay. I acknowledge. Okay. Thank you.
I have seven and then an extra that Betty's going to keep.
That's correct.
In a sealed file.
Okay. Perfect. Moving on to our next action item, I'd like to please entertain a motion to approve the purchase of a 2021 Ford F, Ford 450, four by four dump truck in the amount of $51,590 as recommended by Rex Clary, Director of Operations.
So moved.
Thank you, Michael. Support?
Support.
Susan, thank you. Rex, would you like to say anything about this one? Absolutely. Thank you. And I know how difficult I've been hearing to get used vehicles right now. Rex, would you?
We're still hiring the bus drivers. I'll just plug that while we're.
They're calling the National Guard in Massachusetts to start driving buses now.
Wow. Rex, would you also make sure that those two gentlemen know about the retirement recognition at the end of the school year?
Yes.
I would love to recognize them at that. Thanks.
Rex, you said the salt, you don't have to stand up. You said the salt had taken its toll. Now, that salt only touches the vehicles at the back and, and the spinner part or whatever. Do, is, does this plan include replacement add-ons or whatever is required for getting the salt distributed evenly on the roads?
Yes, yeah. We have a new salt spreader in it. And then if we neutralize and clean all of our equipment, we, you know, some leadership from Jim is the way we push them. We effectively manage grass.
Right.
We use so efficiently with three full time ground bags.
And does this truck gets, get repurposed at all after the, the snow has disappeared?
Yes, this one we use for cold match. We use to deter.
Awesome.
Much more manageable. It's a smaller unit, rather than the 20 ton. Bigger jump to 70.
Great.
Smaller unit that we use throughout the year.
Thank you. I don't get to talk about trucks very often, so.
I, I have one quick thing.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Brad.
So what process do we undergo to bid out these types of things, right? Like you said, it's about availability. But also do we have multiple dealerships who respond to us?
All right. Thank you. So we have the motion by Michael, the second by Susan. I'd like to move to vote, please. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Moving on to administration updates, Dr. Latch.
Okay. I do have a number of comments tonight. And I would like to start with a Sex Education Advisory Board update, our C E A. Celineary Schools teachers and the Sex Education Advisory Board, the C E A, have been looking for and have now found a curriculum designed to meet the needs of this population of special education students. Roughly 120 life skills special education students ranging from grade seven to the young adult program and age 26. Curriculum developed by Dr. Kim Clark and R. N. Christine Ridley, one of whom is a parent of a now grown child with autism and the other whose daughter is a special education teacher of many decades. Both knew from personal experience that schools and families desperately needed an accessible sex ed curriculum for special populations. So they sought to adapt their Positive Prevention Plus P3 curriculum to fit the distinct educational needs of developmentally and intellectually impaired students. Due to the unique and individualized nature of life skills programming for this population, again, approximately 120 of our students, teachers would work with families in developing the curricular content necessary to meet the needs of each individual. Unlike a general education curriculum where the unit might be presented in its entirety to all students, this population would have content hand selected by the teacher based on their needs. These materials are designed to meet the needs of significantly impaired students at the secondary level, which is defined as seventh grade through 12th grade and also beyond high school through 26 years old. Teachers in collaboration with parents and caregivers would curate the appropriate materials to meet the needs of the students at the appropriate age and grade level for the individual. So our timeline, on August 5th, the C E A held hearing number one to present the proposed curriculum to the public. On August 20th, the C E A had a second hearing to present the proposed curriculum again and answer questions that arose from hearing number one. At these hearings, we had a great deal of public comment, both in support of the curriculum and with reservations or concerns about the curriculum. The C E A also gathered many, many comments, opinions from residents and school of choice families via an electronic feedback form. The C E A recently met on September 8th to review feedback from the two hearings, discuss comments made from the community and determine next steps. They plan to meet again in early October. I'm very pleased at how active the C E A has been in involving the community in the process. As many of the Board of Ed trustees have seen, we have had excellent participation at both of the hearings and a lot of feedback in the electronic feedback form. There's also been some conversations within the community about the legality and appropriateness of this curriculum. So I reached out to the Michigan Department of Education and Lori Beckover, H I V S S T D Educational Consultant in the School Health and Safety Unit. She reiterated some important points about sex education for students with special needs, which this curriculum does include. Number one, instruction must be differentiated based on student needs and developmental stage and ability. Two, children and youth who have developmental and/or cognitive delays and challenges benefit from instruction that is simple, clear, visual, concrete, and repetitive. Three, sex education is typically taught using euphemisms and vague explanations. That doesn't work for any students, but is particularly ineffective for students with special needs. Students with special needs, this is number four, are most likely to be victimized and abused. They often lack the language and understanding to report these incidents. Number five, to equip students with special needs with words, understanding, and skills to stay safe and healthy, sex education must include images that are more concrete and explicit than many adults are used to. This P3 curriculum meets the legal standards of the law. In reaching out to Positive Prevention Plus representatives, they have now removed visuals of any slides related to abortion, which will be not taught in this curriculum. We recognize that not every member of the C E A supports all facets of this curriculum, but that is why this process is so important. It allows for community input, feedback, disagreement, and discussion ahead of any proposed changes to the curriculum being sent to the Board of Education. Next, I'd like to comment on the 9/11 tribute that I attended. I had a chance to, I had a chance to attend this tribute at City Hall along with Trustee Jones and Secretary Yankee on Saturday morning, at the City Hall. It was a wonderful tribute to all those people who lost their lives and helped to support our freedom. There were several outstanding speeches delivered that day, including those by Mayor Marl, Police Chief Hart, and Firefighter Sears. A theme that resonated with me was unity. After 9/11 first happened, the country bonded together to rebuild and support a greater America. We need to continue with the theme of unity today as we address a number of challenges in our country. I also like to talk about staffing shortages. Despite the almost 70 new employees you met tonight, staffing continues to be a critical issue for the district. As of today, we still need to hire a minimum of 11 paraeducators, where vacancies exist at all levels, a minimum of three bus drivers, a minimum of five food service employees, a minimum of four custodians. So you can see that when Mr. Ellis is talking about the need to bring in additional staff, this is nearing a, a real serious mode, not only for our district, but if you're watching the news media, this is happening in all districts across Michigan and, and most of the country. We would like to, however, really thank our elementary school parents for helping with walking students to school with limited crossing guards and expanded walking zones. We appreciate the way in which the community in this instant is certainly helping out with our staffing shortages. And that's sort of the new normal that we're in right now to help with community support as we're trying to deal with these staffing shortages. Finally, I would like to just thank everybody for a great start to the school year. Yes, we have some challenges, but it's been so great to see all the students, teachers, staff, and community members in our buildings to start the school year. I'm already starting to feel that routines that were disrupted due to the turbulent combination of remote hybrid and in-person learning from last year are starting to be reestablished. I very much appreciate the entire Celine community and the effort that everyone is putting forth to make all of this happen for our students. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Julianne, we'd like to offer you the, the first opportunity for your Board of Ed rep comments. If you'd like to, go ahead.
Yeah. So, um, in general, this is all going to be pretty positive. So hopefully, I'll look forward to some positivity here. In the middle school and high school, clubs and organizations have been meeting and that has gone back to 7:15 morning meetings and stuff, which is obviously when you're virtual or hybrid. It's hard to meet with an entire club. So it's, it's nice to see everyone getting back together and doing what, you know, students love to do. Fall athletic programs have also been practicing and playing games. So far, there have been no cancellation or postponements due to COVID. And in the high school, from what I've seen and then from what I've heard from younger students as well, there is a sense of normalcy having, you know, 30 to 35 kids in a classroom. It's nice to see without a teacher, you know, having to constantly look back on their computer to teach to virtual, or virtual kids, which would be for behalf of the class. So it's nice to be in the class with everybody. And masking in the school, in the high school, since it's the only school I'm in at the moment. I'd say in, in general, the rules are being well followed in the classroom. I'd say nearly 100% of students keep it above their nose and mouth, which is nice to see. And in the hallways and during lunch, there are some times where you come across students with their mask down below their mouth or nose. But in general, that's, you know, during small group projects where, you know, students leave the classroom to work and collaborate. So that's typically in smaller groups, you know, not during passing periods or anything. So that is a little less concerning. And then for special education, all students with I E Ps are back in the buildings. And they held a summer program ran by the Special Education Department. That was said to be very beneficial to students and transition back to school. And then at elementary schools as well, there are third grade buddy systems, pairing each young fiver kindergarten student with a third grade buddy. And within the first week of school, they helps, you know, younger students get familiar with the schools and the rules of, you know, recess, lunch, just, you know, how to be a good student in class as well. And there are also third grade safety buddies, which is a program where third graders help, again, the young five and kindergarten students find their bus lines or aftercare, which is, I thought was a pretty cool system to see. Students helping students. So everything's going well so far and I think everyone's super excited to be back in school.
Great. Thanks, Julianne, and welcome again. Anyone else like to give any updates? These are quiet tonight. Well, not, not during literacy though, Jenny.
We spoke a lot during.
That, that is true. The only thing, I mean, there's a ton, ton going on, obviously. The, the only thing that I would add is I was able to attend five of our open houses. One, one is a mom. And it brought such incredible joy, talking with families and talking with staff and talking with kids and just welcoming each other back. Everyone was very, very excited. And it was very well done. So I'd like to, to thank those building principals and, and staffs for really going out of their way this year to make sure that the kids felt love. Because I certainly felt it that night and appreciate that. Doing just a double check. Okay. Michael, did you have something?
He, I guess I could pile on ever so slightly to, to what Dr. Latch said about 9/11. I had the opportunity on Saturday, on September 11th, to be outside the Pentagon. And what's remarkable to me about that, I was an uninvited guest, that's for sure. I, I couldn't get too close because this fellow named Joe, Joe Biden was going to be showing up there. So anyway, I, what was remarkable is that how, how much of the building is, is back as if it had never been damaged. And if anyone visited downtown New York, they see the same thing. But the, the thing is, just like with this pandemic, as we slowly put it behind, as we'll build from it, we build stronger, we, we will remember the, the difficulties. And we're still in the midst of the difficulties, but I think we're, we're using this as opportunities to be creative and to make positive changes as we move forward. So, I mean, this work and watching the ceremony at, at the Pentagon and building up to where we are now is all just sort of resonated with one really cool, happy-feely bubble for me. So thank you for reminding us about that with your, your remarks, Dr. Latch.
I will say one thing in like 10 seconds. The beginning of a school year for educators is like drinking out of a fire hose, right? It's just tons of information, tons of things happening, and yet our kids are, Julianne. They're, they're, they're having a great experience. They're happy to be there. They're so excited to be in school. So I just want to take a second and acknowledge that, right? Our educators, you're, keep coming with us, you know, and, and we appreciate you.
I was just going to give a shout out to the parents too, because I know how crazy it must feel. Or no, I know how it feels, but, you know, just, I mean, going from, yeah, it's, it's just, it's been different, I think. Go, moving towards normal, right? And, and doing all of the activities and. And, and doing all of the activities and, oh my goodness, the orientations and open houses. And it was like, you know, constant, I guess I, you know, I have three little ones, but, you know, I just see, seeing those parents out there and, you know, I think, yeah, just shout out to them.
All right, moving on to our consent agenda items. The following are offered as part of the consent agenda. The motion noted will allow for the authorization of all listed items without discussion unless a member of the board requests that any one or all be considered individually. I'd like to please entertain a motion and move to authorize the following items as part of the consent agenda. A, approval of the Board of Education regular meeting minutes of August tenth, twenty twenty-one. B, approval of the Board of Education Finance Committee, Finance Committee meeting minutes of August tenth, twenty twenty-one. C, approval of the Board of Education Retreat Session Minutes of August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. D, approval of the Board of Education Policy Committee Meeting Minutes, August twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one. E, approval of the Board of Education M E S B Professional Development Session Minutes of September seventh, twenty twenty-one. F, approval of payment of the General Fund Accounts Payable of September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one in the amount of nine million, forty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty-eight dollars and sixty-three cents. G, approval of payment of the Bond Series Three Accounts Payable of September fourteenth, twenty twenty-one in the amount of nine thousand, four hundred and fifteen dollars. H, receive and file Curriculum, Finance, and Human Resources Report. And item I, approval of overnight and/or out-of-state field trips as submitted by Superintendent Latch. Field trips number one, two, six, eight for the twenty twenty-two school year. F F A State Leadership Conference, F F A National Conference, F F A Ag Michigan State Convention, and F F A Ag Leadership Camp for Officers. I entertain a motion.
I would like to move to approve the, all of the items on the consent agenda.
All right, thank you for the motion, Jenny. Support?
Support.
Candace, thank you. Moving to vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries seven zero. Items scheduled on our next agenda for the twenty-eighth of September, Dr. Latch?
Yep, we have the Continue to Learn Plan and Transgender Policy.
All right, thank you. This is our second opportunity for public comment. I am going to pause because I realized after we went past that I did not read our response to previous public comments. So I'd like to pause and do that. I realized it when we were having presentations, and I wanted to continue with that Continue to Learn conversation. So I will read that, and then we will move into our second opportunity for public comment. You can use this opportunity now to turn in any other forms, and we'll move right to that as soon as we're done with this. Response to previous public comment. Thank you for your continued feedback. As the Board values your personal stories and perspectives on various topics that are important to our SAS community. We are all a passionate group when it comes to our kids, and rightly so. Please know that everyone is heard regardless of topic, perspective presented, or how the Board ends up voting or moving forward. We do try to listen to each person, and we do try to respond to each email with respect. The Board and staff are here because we love the students as well, so please try to be kind to each other and to us. We see what is happening in our district and other districts with threats of violence, aggressive behavior towards superintendents, teachers, staff, and trustees. It is real. We thank you in advance for being professional, collaborative, and caring. We are thrilled to have the students back in school five days a week and hear how much you value that as well. It is likely to be another challenging year for a bit, so thank you for your continued flexibility as we continue to support their education and their social and emotional well-being. We are also receiving feedback regarding the Sex Ed Advisory Board. The C E B is a different entity than the Board of Education. The Board of Education has not had a proposal presented to us at this date. There has been no curriculum vote or change, and the curriculum being discussed via hearings is only for the life skills students that are in grades seven through twelve. Another key topic, Continue to Learn. We drilled down into literacy as a focus tonight, and at each board meeting, we will highlight things that staff are doing to combat the situation that our world has been placed in due to COVID nineteen and the disrupted learning. Student achievement is a key focus of this Board and administration alongside of safety in this unprecedented time. We want all kids to get back to learning and growing as normal, though things still do not feel quite normal yet, but the SAS staff is working very hard to support all students. Thank you again for your time, your thoughts, and your support during this critical time. Let us please work together to keep kids in the buildings, keep them learning, and keep them happy. Second opportunity for public comment. A member of the public may address the Board briefly for up to three minutes, and we'll use the same protocols with Secretary Eastup, yellow at thirty seconds, red at three minutes, for up to three minutes, or request to be scheduled on the agenda of a future meeting. We take students in person first and seeing none. I will move to other members of our community and stakeholders that are present tonight. I'm going in order that these were received by Betty Yonkey. And first up, we have Parent Roy Grove.
I have this deep sense of disappointment. I read the Standards of Practice, talking about trust, respect, communicating openly, honestly, transparently, ethical standards. And watching the school district over the last few years, I'm feeling a sense of there's anything but. I've seen so much underhanded stuff. I've seen so much stuff that doesn't follow this. A simple example would be when Celine Middle School allowed boys to use the girls' locker room. They did that without notifying parents or anything. That's obviously contentious, not something you just do in secret. That is endemic of our school district. I don't know what's going on or why people think that's okay. Clearly, there's agendas or values involved that people know aren't going to be popular or are going to receive a lot of resistance. And so the answer is, well, let's just do it in secret, or let's just do it anyway. If you want to reduce threats of violence, be open and honest about stuff. Invite people to talk and not shut them down. I have a daughter who graduated from the high school a couple of years ago. She expressed disgust during a video and received credible death threats instantly from students in this school. Those were felonies. Those students could have gone to prison. I see a lot of this, and a lot of it comes from a group, I won't use names or labels, but if we don't invite people to talk and actually listen and not shut them down and tell them, shut up, you're from the wrong tribe, that's what we're seeing is a bunch of tribalism. If you're not from the right tribe, you're wrong, and whatever you say doesn't matter, so shut up and get behind us. This is really disturbing. There's a lot of parents that are disturbed beyond words. I would really, really, really encourage the district, the Board, the staff to abandon this idea that they know better, and they're just going to do what they're going to do anyway. A lot of this, the word I'd like to use is it just comes across to me like theater. Going through the motions, let people talk to pacify them. There's a principle called crowdsourcing, something like that. Take a jar of jelly beans, put who knows how many in there. The more people you ask, how many jelly beans are in that jar, the more accurate the answer becomes. You average all those answers, you start to get to zeroing on the exact number of jelly beans. Why aren't we doing that? Where does this attitude come from that somebody knows better, and we don't really want to hear from people? They say they want to hear from people. It doesn't appear to me to be that way. Again, it just seems like theater. What's it going to take to be inclusive of the voices that we don't like to hear? All means all. Well, apparently, it doesn't, and not in practice.
Right, thank you for your comments. Next, we have Jennifer Scarpotti, Celine Parent. Okay. Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Dave Rosenfield, Celine Resident Former Parent.
Done. Oh, there we go. All right, I'll be very brief. I just want to reassure the Board that you haven't lost the trust of all the parents, not yet at least. But I think it's safe to say that the majority of parents are still with you. And we actually greatly appreciate all the measures that you have already taken and the measures that you continue to take to make Celine Area Schools a more inclusive environment where all of our kids, all students, can feel safe and supported so that they can learn. I just wanted to thank you for, for having the courage to do what's necessary to protect, to protect our kids. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Raylen Davis, Parent. And Raylen, I have two forms for you. It says, on behalf of another parent, are you going to?
Originally, I was going to read Jennifer's words for her, and then she just told me to just email them, and I'll just do my own piece instead.
Okay.
That's still okay.
Okay, great. Sounds good. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. I would like to talk about the legality of both the S E A B and the sex and the curriculum at this point. I actually do completely object to what Latch has said. I am glad that you worked out to, reached out to P P E and got the abortion slide removed. However, you did not address that there are five pieces of Michigan law that is required to be in the curriculum that was not shown to parents within it. And those five specific things are, discuss the benefits of ceasing sex if pupil is currently obtaining them. Advise pupils of the laws pertaining to the responsibility as parents to children born in and out of wedlock. Ensure that pupils are not taught in a way that condones the violation of laws of the state pertaining to sexuality, including but not limited to those relating to sodomy, indecent exposure, gross indecency, and criminal sexual contact for first, second, third, and fourth degrees. No Michigan law is currently taught in this curriculum. Provide information for pupils about how young parents can learn more about the adoption services and about the provisions of the Safe Delivery Law. That was currently on the abortion slide. I have not looked, but if you took out the abortion slide, you also took out the adoption services. And there, what was in there was literally just a list that you can adopt. It did not actually talk about real options. And the information that having sex or sexual contact with an individual under the age of sixteen is a crime here in Michigan. So even if the removal of the adoption, it still does not meet state law. And I would like you guys to come back with proof that this will actually meet state law. I am not convinced yet. Second of all, I filed a formal complaint against the school on Friday that the S E A B in itself is illegal. We did not have student members on our board, and today, Latch sent out information trying to correct that. We also do not have goals and objectives to reduce the teen S T Is and pregnancy rates of Celine schools. And then you find a curriculum to meet your goals. And at this point, our goals are we will show respect, and everyone will see themselves. And I would like to know how those two goals actually reduce teen pregnancies and teen S T Is and objectives that is state law required. And so at this point, I asked the school to, yes, we need to remedy the membership. I think anything this current S E A B has done should be null and void because we had an illegal S E A B board fulfilling it. I think the co-chairs should be removed because obviously it was their job to have a legal S E A B board, and they haven't done it yet. And I think this, and the board, legal by law, it's the board who creates and runs the S E A B. It is not the school district. It is your board, your committee, your decision. You could tell them, we are done, you need to find another curriculum, and that is what needs to be done.
Raylen, thank you for your comments. Next is Parent Shari Barnett. Is it Sherry or Shari?
Shari.
Shari, okay, Shari Barnett, thank you.
Hi, my name is Shari Barnett. I am a mother of a high school student. I'm here at Celine Area Schools. And I just wanted to say I completely concur with the first gentleman with the level of disappointment in the school board. This is stemming from first and foremost, as someone who put their trust and sent a letter to the school board, and that letter later found its way to my employer and the compliance hotline for using my work address to send that letter to you. That was quite disappointing, to say the least. So as far as in ethical standards across the board, that might be a great idea. I also wanted to say that in the personal correspondence with Dr. Latch and in, in statements made in previous board meetings, you have said that under no circumstances are you, are you implementing concepts of critical race theory or anything that is encompassed of critical race theory. But that, we sat here for an hour and listened to the teaching and learning talk about, talk about cultural responsiveness instruction. And that board, the Teaching and Learning Board, this new instructional design board, is comprised of individuals who have public profiles indicating that they are cultural responsiveness pedagogy consultants aimed at, and they self-proclaim a social studies teacher transitioning into social justice advocates. That person in this meeting today was invited to personally look at our, our policies, our procedures, a social justice, a person with aspirations as a social justice advocate, to look at our policy and procedures. And that is no different than if you would ask a military person, an Army representative. And if you don't see the difference in that, we're farther apart than I thought. Thank you.
Shari, thank you for your comments.
Sorry, I'm saying we don't allow personal attacks on district employees, board members, and students. Yep.
Okay, thank you, Susan. If I can, we'll talk up later, sorry. Betty, did you have, I wanted to check in the audience to make sure there weren't any other comments before we moved on. Okay, thank you. Betty is going to read some other emails that were received this afternoon. What I will say is I, we are allowing these to be read because we do value feedback, and we do listen, and we do hear this. And I don't want to be the one that's going to censor a parent's right to speak. That said, some of the content, I will say, I felt was attacking this board in certain ways and talking about our integrity, and talking about other things and our moral compass. So I'm going to have Betty read these, but I have referred this procedure to the Policy Committee for review on how we handle items that come into us over email. I will say some of the emails that we've been receiving have been very borderline as well. But we are going to allow these to be read tonight and let it, let it be shown that we will listen to all pieces of feedback. And I hope that, I hope that in the future, we're able to have a little bit different tone and level of respect for each other. And thank you for all of your comments this evening as well. Betty, you want to go ahead?
Thank you, Jennifer. I'm reading this on behalf of Daniel Gillespie. I object to school's action in the public hearing process. You have already lost the trust and respect of many parents in the district. This signing of Standards of Practice paper theatrics is an embarrassment. The obvious admittance of guilt and, quite honestly, too little, too late. The fact that the Board feels they need to put these standards on paper and didn't feel they were already inherently and ethically implied standards of practice as a part of the duties of being on the school board is sad. Many of these standards have not been followed by many board members, especially this last year. Will there be consequences for future and past actions which did, which did not follow these standards, standards of practice? Will there be public admittance of wrongdoing from publicly expressing one's political views and political partisanship, ignoring parent concerns or requests for information, defying state law? Or will recall elections be the only answer? This flimsy theatrical meaningless piece of paper with signatures does not guarantee the taxpayer's transparency or a voice. It only condescendingly shows how above the law the Board Administration thinks they are. It's a Band-Aid over a large gap-infected wound.
Oh, thanks, Betty. I just wanted to make sure that you don't read addresses for these folks.
I will not.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm reading this comment on behalf of Thomas Frederick. Dear members of the school board, I apologize that I cannot be with you in person. I object to your actions regarding the SEAB public hearing process, including a lack of transparency, making information hard to get, refusing to do a question and answer session, and ignoring state law regarding the formation of the SEAB in legitimate review and adoption of a sex ed program. Are the names of the members of the SEAB public? They should be. How will the community at large know if they are being represented? Are the demographics of the SEAB aligned with state law? It should be. As elected officials in charge of the well-being of our most precious asset, our children, you ought to be ashamed of the way you have carried yourselves in this and in other recent matters. I object to emails and questions going unanswered while trustees and school officials bully their way past parental rights. I object to board members using their position to further their own political agendas and approve a curriculum intended to indoctrinate our children to a specific ideology. I object to the constant secrecy forcing parents to FOIA basic information. I object to a group of trustees so void of a moral compass that they have to sign a paper stating that they will act with the basic integrity expected of any duly elected responsible human being. You have lost the trust and respect of many of the parents in the school district. Signing a piece of paper is not enough. What specific things will you do? What specific changes will you make to become transparent, to be free of political ideologies, to respect parental rights in all things from curriculum adoption to COVID-19 precautions, and listen to and carry out the will of those whom you serve? I charge you today to step up and become true advocates for our children and families and to win back our respect and our trust, or to step down and let others with more fortitude and integrity take your place. Reading this on behalf of Carrie Grove. I object to the school's actions in the public hearing process, including the lack of transparency, making information hard to get, refusing to do a question and answer session, ignoring state law with a sex ed program and SEAB members being made public. Currently, we do not know who sits on the sex education advisory board. Since the board is supposed to represent our community, who sits on this board should be public knowledge. Steve Latch will not reveal the names. This is unacceptable and must be made public to follow the law. There should also be a student representative on the board, and there has been no confirmation if there is one. This is not transparent or legal. I object to emails and questions going unanswered, board members using their position to further their own political agendas, parents being forced to FOIA for simple information. You have lost the trust and respect of parents. School board members signing a piece of paper committing to a standard of practice is a token act. What specific changes will be made? What consequences are in place for violations? I'm reading this on behalf of Erin Crum. I object to SAS actions in the public hearing process. Before this school year started, I watched one of the board meetings online to determine whether or not I wanted my children to attend here. The board completely disregarded the parents' questions and concerns. You made up my mind. Since then, I have observed the actions taken by SAS on different subjects. The over-sexualized sex ed program is not the only disappointing turn, but is the most disturbing. It is not the school's job to teach oral and anal sex, masturbation, or abortion, especially to special needs students. I object to parent emails and questions going unanswered and board members using their position for political agendas over the mental and physical well-being of the students. You have lost the trust of parents. Your actions so far this year prove you are unfit for the positions you hold that you will be remembered. I read this on behalf of Kathy Dobralowski. I object to the school's action in the public hearing process, including the lack of transparency, making information hard to get, refusing to do a question and answer session, and ignoring state law with a sex ed program and SEAB members being made public. I object to emails and questions going unanswered, board members using their position to further their own political agendas, parents being forced to FOIA simple information. You have lost the trust and respect of parents. Signing a paper is a token act. What specific changes will you make? I'm reading this on behalf of Cynthia Frederick. I object to the school's action in the SEAB public hearing process, including the lack of transparency, making information hard to get, refusing to do a question and answer session, and ignoring state law with a sex ed program and SEAB members being made public. I object to emails and questions going unanswered, board members using their position to further their own political agendas, parents being forced to FOIA basic information. You have lost the trust and respect of parents. Signing a paper is a token act. What specific changes will be made? I read this on behalf of Michelle Tigert. While I am grateful for the work that you do to better the lives of students in many areas, the adoption of the PPP sex ed curriculum is a clear failing in that effort. It feels like the members of the SEAB are trying to push this through quickly and are not listening to any feedback that does not agree with the opinions of the SEAB. There is no student representative on the board, which is a failing to follow the established policy. The sex ed curriculum fails to teach five out of ten lessons that are required by Michigan State education laws. In addition, the curriculum teaches things that shouldn't be taught according to Michigan State law, for example, teaching abortion as an answer to accidental pregnancy. Why is this considered acceptable? We need a curriculum which matches the needs of our community and also follows the law. And while there are some good parts in the sex ed program, there are too many which flaunt adherence to state education standards and ignore some of the real needs of our community. It is partly for these reasons that my husband and I have withdrawn our students from Celine schools. We no longer trust Celine schools with the moral education of our children. They've lost that privilege of trust. I'm reading this on behalf of Denise, Bob and Denise Humphrey. We, Bob and Denise Humphrey, are among those parents who object strongly to the sex ed curriculum which is currently being pushed forward. The stick figure porn is unconscionable. If the purpose of the program, among others, is to reduce teenage pregnancy, we reveal a double standard in allowing the stick figures as part of the curriculum. Students are having sex and getting pregnant. They will not benefit from explicit graphics. More importantly, porn is an addiction. Shall we contribute to an addiction that causes loss of jobs and breakups of marriage across the U.S.? We are hearing of secrecy, forcing of individual agendas, lack of public disclosure, and lack of attention to thoughts and ideas which diverge from those of certain board members. We have had a strong school system through the years, but these actions will serve only to weaken the system and damage our children. Currently, we have no children in Celine area schools, but we have seen four birth children and five foster children move through the system. It has been a safe place for them, and we would like to see that continue for future children. I'm reading this on behalf of Ben Goodman. I am the parent of two students in Celine area schools. I'm speaking to you tonight in support of the positive prevention plus curriculum for our students in the life skills and adult programs in Celine area schools. This curriculum is for use only, is for use only for students with developmental disabilities in these two programs, not students accessing the general education curriculum or receiving services like speech OT or a consult. As a parent of two children receiving special education support, both my wife and I have inquired about a program designed to meet the unique needs of children like our son in order to teach him about his body, how it works, and how to protect himself from sexual predators. This curriculum offers everything students with developmental disabilities needs. It provides visual aids and supports in the form of drawings and videos. The worksheets use kid-friendly definitions that are distraction-free. It allows parents the option to opt out of sections without any form of punishment while respecting their religious and personal beliefs. Many people are using a partisan attack to try to take this curriculum away from my child, as well as so many other children in this district. I refuse to use partisan radio and newspapers to make a scene because I'm miserable. Instead, I will talk to you, our trusted Board of Education. This is not a liberal curriculum. It is a curriculum designed to educate our most at-risk learners about their bodies, how the reproductive system works, about the different forms of penetration and the dangers of sexual predators and sex trafficking. It respects all races, genders, gender identity, and sexual identity. This is not stick figure porn. It is a visual curriculum that is evidence-based and peer-reviewed. It's a serious curriculum intended to educate and protect children and young adults with our significant, with significant developmental disabilities. Please support our SEAB and our most at-risk learners and vote to support this amazing I'm reading this on behalf of Daisy Sherman. I am the mom of twin seventh grade boys. One of my boys is autistic. For me, this is not about conservative versus liberal, religious versus secular, democratic versus republican. This is about the safety of our children. When you are putting your belief system, politics, or feelings ahead of the safety of my child, we are going to have words. My son cannot comprehend the general education curriculum. He's often crippled by his autism. He doesn't always understand what is safe or okay because he doesn't have the understanding that someone shouldn't touch him in places or that he shouldn't touch another person that is a safety issue. I need him to learn about sex and everything that goes along with it. He doesn't understand when something is implied. He doesn't pick up social cues. Things for him need to be point-blank, black and white. He needs visuals to learn, and he needs to learn the proper terminology. So I do not care if the words masturbation, anal sex, oral sex, vagina, penis, or anything else is used in this curriculum. I do not care if there are pictures of stick figures and positions that other people find offensive. This is real world, and I need him to have as much education on the subject as possible. I've never heard of an instance where it was detrimental for a person to have knowledge, even knowledge they may never use. My child not only needs this curriculum taught to him, he deserves to have the education, one that he can comprehend and understand. The proposed curriculum is evidence-based and has been studied for three years by the SEAB. It's time to approve it and start protecting our most vulnerable members of the district. If a parent who is opposed to this curriculum feels that children who cannot understand the words used doesn't need to be taught because the pictures are too graphic, that's an albeit mentality and extremely offensive to this parent of a special needs child. I heard this implied by a parent on a radio program this morning, and it made me beyond angry. How dare you deny my child this valuable education because you are offended? I am reading this statement on behalf of FIFA Corrigan. I am very concerned with the new sexual health curriculum being proposed for our amazing and sweet special needs children. It is my understanding that this curriculum is not taught anywhere in the state of Michigan. It comes from California, where the rules for teaching sexual education are very different from my own state. The definitions used in this curriculum are deeply offensive to diverse people of faith. Sex is defined using offensive pornographic images, and gender is defined on a sliding scale, with children being encouraged to pick a gender based on their feelings rather than understanding themselves as a biological reality. As a Muslim, I would be forced to opt my children out of the curriculum because its teachings contradict my faith and sincerely held religious beliefs. Any practicing Muslim parent of a special needs child would feel the same. They'd be deeply offended and ostracized by the use of this curriculum. I leave you with one troubling question. What happens to the survey, parents used to give feedback to the district on this curriculum? Where were the results? Many, many of our friends in the district of all faith backgrounds express grave concern. Why is this curriculum being rammed through? Why are our voices not being heard? Please consider using this culturally insensitive and deeply offense, please reconsider using this culturally insensitive and deeply offensive curriculum.
Thanks, Betty. Is that all of them? Okay, thank you very much. We do have a closed session tonight. There is the potential for board business after this closed session. I'd like to please entertain a motion to enter closed session of the Board of Education at 10:31 PM with the intent to re-enter open session at 11:00 PM. For the purpose of collective bargaining 8C of the Open Meetings Act under Section 8C, a simple majority vote is sufficient to enter into a closed session. Who would like to make a motion? I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Jenny, thank you. Brad, support. We are now entered into closed session. We'll need this room vacated within a couple minutes. Thank you.
Test, okay. All right, excellent. A motion was made by trustee Miller and seconded by vice president McVeigh to reopen, re-enter open session of the regular Board of Education meeting at 11:20 PM. And we are amending the agenda to include now an action item. May I please entertain a motion to, recommended motion to approve the letter of agreement between Saline Area Schools and the Saline Education Association, SEA, and education, educational support personnel, ESP, signed and dated August 31st, 2021, which agrees to temporary COVID amendments to, to the existing collective bargaining agreements between the Board of Education and Saline Area Schools.
Support.
Oh, wait, just kidding.
And I'll support it. You make the motion, I'll support it.
Okay, motion, Eastab, Second, Miller, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, seven zero. Six zero, I've been saying seven all night, eh? Six zero, and I'll need to amend that for the minutes with Susan and. Okay, adjournment. I'd please like to entertain a motion to adjourn the Board of Education of September 14th, 2021, at 11:23 PM.
Sound moved.
Candace, thank you, support.
Yep.
Uh, Brad, thank you. If we can move to vote, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye, opposed? Hearing none, motion carries, six zero. Uh, we are adjourned, 11:23.